To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. For any scheduled public hearings, please call when prompted to speak if you want the comment to be part of the record. Speaking times will be determined by the total number of public comment cards and callers in the queue at the start of each public comment period. For one to 20 total speakers, each speaker will receive up to three minutes. For 21 to 39 total speakers, each speaker will receive up to two minutes. And for 40-plus total speakers, each speaker will receive up to one minute. No additional comment cards or calls will be accepted once the public comment period begins.
Good evening and welcome back to a joint meeting of the Burbank City Council and the Police Commission, although the Police Commission portion is just about done. Today is Tuesday, October 1st, 2024, and I appreciate all of you being here. Please join me for a moment of reflection as we start each of our council meetings. This moment is intended to begin our meeting tonight with a positive and collective support of our beloved Burbank community. The City Council welcomes everyone joining us this evening, and we encourage you to take a moment right now to reflect on our community and the work that we will be doing together tonight. Although each of us has our own unique reasons for being here, we're united in our shared passion for this wonderful city that we all call home. And as we pause, let us consider our individual contributions and what they mean to those around us. Let us find Solace in knowing that by working together with a shared spirit of community and partnership, we will always act responsibly for the betterment of Burbank. Thank you all very much. Now, tonight, we're going to do things a little bit different. Don't worry, Mr. McDougal, not too different. I understand that we have a milestone birthday in our community from a longtime community member. I am going to embarrass you, Gloria, I'm so sorry. Please stand up. Everyone, would you join me in singing a very special happy birthday to the incredible Gloria Solace? And I think I'll have guests give a der. Now, I can't carry a tune to save my life, but I think the Vice Mayor is pretty darn good, so why don't you lead me out this time? I don't only pick on Zizet, would you help me, please?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Gloria. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you for everything you do for our community, Gloria. You're amazing. You're a mom to me and to Burbank.
And thank you, Ken, for jumping off the bench and starting the song up, man. That was, I can't wait to see you on the next season of The Voice. That's gonna be good. Now, before I get too far off track and Joe starts ushering me out of the room, we now are going to do our pledge of allegiance, and I'm honored to say that we have a very special group to help us with the pledge tonight. If I can invite up the Scout Master of Troop 219 to introduce the troop.
Thank you very much, City Council and community members. I'm Leon Smith, Scout Master of Burbank Troop 219, and I proudly present my Scouts to lead the pledge tonight.
All right, Scouts, come on up here.
Those in uniform, please right-hand salute. Those not in uniform, please place your right hand over your heart and join us in the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. Audience, you may be seated.
Mayor is two, right? I can sit down now?
Yes.
Outstanding. Give it up for our troop. And happy birthday again, Paul McKenna. It's just a night of birthdays. Oh, he's coming back, okay. Madam City Clerk, how are you this evening?
I am terrific. How are you, Mr. Mayor?
I may have had too much caffeine, but in that vein, let's call the roll.
Okay. Councilmember Anthony.
Here.
Councilmember Mullins.
Here.
Councilmember Takahashi.
Here.
Vice Mayor Perez.
Here and caffeinated.
And Mayor Schultz.
Ever-present. We have a quorum, 5-0. All right, there will be two periods of public comment tonight. This is the time where I have to go through all the preparatory instructions, everyone, so bear with me. I will note, by the way, that we do have interpretive services right here in the front row, so if you need assistance with translation from either Armenian or Spanish to English, we have our interpreters. Thank you both so much for being here. I will order now that if, by the time the public comment period closes and we stop accepting new cards, if no one has asked for your assistance, you're both free to go, and thank you so much for being here. All right, as I said, there will be two periods of public comment tonight. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone during the general public comment period, and please note that you must submit your card or call in before the general public comment period begins. Now, the first period of public comment is for general public comment on any matter concerning city business and/or any agenda item. If you're here in person and would like to speak during the general public comment period, you should have and still can, as of right now, turn in one of those nifty yellow cards available there at the entrance, and that Ms. Clark is prominently displaying for everyone. Great job, Ms. Clark. If you'd like to participate in the general public comment period by phone, please call right now at 818-238-3335. You heard correct, Vice Mayor. It's 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until the general public comment period begins, at which time no additional calls will be taken, so you have to be in the queue when we start public comment. An additional public comment period will be available after tonight's report to council. That will be done in person only, so if you want to speak to that item by phone, the right time to do it is the general public comment period. With all that said, let's go to announcements. We have seven announcements this evening. I ask that you turn your attention to the monitors in the room.
includes all fixed route and senior and disabled transit services. Learn more and find your route by visiting burbankbus.org. The League of Women Voters Glendale and Burbank Unit presents the Burbank City Council Candidate Forum on October 8th from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. at the Community Services Building. The public is invited to submit questions for the candidates by October 5th via email to mary@lwvlosangeles.org. The event will be broadcast live on Spectrum Channel 6, AT&amp;T Channel 99, and the city's YouTube page. The Burbank Planning Commission will hold the first of two study sessions in council chambers at 6:00 p.m. on Monday, October 14th. This study session will cover proposed land use and urban forum policies and standards for the media district-specific plan update. Members of the public will have the opportunity to learn more about the project, ask questions, and provide feedback to city staff. To learn more, please visit burbankmediadistrictsp.com. The City of Burbank's Economic Development Team will be hosting their next Burbank Tech Talks event on Wednesday, October 16th, at the Hollywood Production Center from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. This quarter's Tech Talk will focus on the diversity of the local tech industries. Panelists will be announced soon. Tickets and more information can be found on the Economic Development website econdevburbank.com/entrepreneurs or by reaching out to econdev@burbankca.gov. Our Burbank invites residents and businesses to enter the 2024 Outdoor Halloween Decorating Contest. The entry period will close on Friday, October 18th, or once 50 entries are received, whichever comes first. Winners and all other entrants will be revealed on Friday, October 25th, giving everyone in the community a chance to visit the decorated homes and businesses. Winning categories include best overall house, second-place residential, third-place residential, best youth entry, and best business entry. To enter the contest or to learn more, visit burbankca.gov/ourburbank. The County of Los Angeles began mailing official sample ballot booklets on September 26th to all registered voters. On October 3rd, voters will begin receiving their vote-by-mail ballots. The last day to register to vote is Monday, October 21st. Voter registration cards are available in the Burbank City Clerk's Office, at Burbank Libraries, or you may register online at lavote.gov. If your name has changed or if you have moved, you will need to re-register by the deadline. As a reminder, the November 5th, 2024 Burbank General Municipal Election is consolidated with the County of Los Angeles General Election, and any questions regarding voter registration and the issuance of ballots can be addressed by contacting the county at 800-815-2666 or by visiting lavote.gov. You can also contact the Burbank City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851 or email cityclerks@burbankca.gov. Are you ready to rise to the occasion, Burbank? The RISE program is now accepting applications for the class of 2025. RISE is a nine-week leadership program that aims to inspire and empower Burbank residents and broaden their understanding of the city and its resources. If you are interested in learning more about this program, please visit burbankca.gov/rise. The application is open now and closes on Friday, October 25th. This concludes the announcements for this evening.
And just a quick shout-out to the outdoor decorating contest for Halloween. You have about two and a half weeks to enter. I'm not naming names, but I felt really good about my design, and all of a sudden, my next-door neighbor outdid me. Lucky I'm not competitive, but there's still time for all of you to enter the contest. October 18th is the deadline. Next up, we have a presentation, just one this evening. This is a presentation of a proclamation in recognition of Fire Prevention Week, recognizing October 6 through 12 as Fire Prevention Week in the City of Burbank. At this time, I'd like to welcome back and up here, Fire Chief Danny Alvarez. We gotta stop meeting like this, right? Okay, you know the drill. Whereas, the City of Burbank is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city. And whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at significant risk from fire. And whereas, home fires killed more than 2,700 people in the United States in 2022, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 374,000 home fires in that year. And whereas, smoke alarms were present in nearly three-quarters of the reported home fires from 2018 to 2022. And whereas, 59% of home fire deaths were caused by fires in properties with no smoke alarms, or 43% of those smoke alarms failed to operate. So make sure to have it checked and to check it regularly. And whereas, the risk of dying in a structured fire is approximately 60% lower in homes with working smoke alarms and in homes with no alarms or none that operated. And whereas, Burbank residents should install smoke alarms in every bedroom, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of your home. And whereas, residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas, Burbank's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and education, which is what this week is all about. And whereas, the 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme is "Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You," reminds us that properly installed and maintained smoke alarms can truly make a lifesaving difference. Now, therefore, I, Nick Schultz, Mayor of the great city of Burbank, do hereby proclaim the week of October 6 through 12, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week in our city, and I urge the community to check your smoke alarms monthly, practice a family fire escape plan during this week, if you don't already have one, and support the many public safety activities and efforts of Burbank's Fire and Emergency Services. Chief, this proclamation and the mic are all yours, but I'll hold this for you.
Okay, thank you very much. First, I'd like to invite a few of our staff members here. We have our, come on up, Fire Marshal Battalion Chief Jim Moy. We have our administrative analyst, Channing Reyes, and we have our Fire Administrator, Christine Alice. So Chief Moy oversees the Fire Prevention Bureau. Christine oversees all of our civilian administrative staff, and Channing oversees all of our clerical staff in the Fire Prevention Bureau. So as a fire department, you know, a big, big part of our, our mission essentially is to provide for the health and safety of the community we serve, and we do that through a lot of different avenues. And traditionally, when you think about the fire department, you think about, you know, the fire engines going out the door with lights and sirens responding to emergencies. But the reality is, our goal is to prevent the emergency from happening in the first place, right? And so that's where the Fire Prevention Bureau comes in. They perform over 5,000 fire inspections a year. They issue over 1,500 permits annually as well. And, and a big, big component that was mentioned is the public education, right? And that may be things that, that extend beyond just fire prevention, things like fire, or fall prevention tips, and all, all kinds of health and safety things. And if there's one area or space that our Fire Prevention Bureau has grown or changed the most in the last couple of years, it's been through our outreach, which we've really capitalized on social media, and I just want to take a moment to acknowledge Channing Reyes, who oversees all of our social media. And if you look at the social media changes that we've made over the last several years, she's done a phenomenal job, and her ability to engage with and reach so many more members of our community than we've ever been able to do, and do so in a way that really sends a great message, has been phenomenal. So, big thanks to all of our fire prevention folks for the incredible work they do. And we will be for Fire Prevention Week Monday. We will be at the Paseo, starting around 4 o'clock, giving some fire prevention tips, so please come by and say hi. Thank you.
One more round for them, right? Before we move into the City Manager Report, I'd like to remind everyone, the general public comment period will begin shortly, so be, please be sure, if you haven't already done so, do it right now, in fact. Submit your public comment card, your yellow public comment card, or call in at 818-238-3335. And that is correct, Councilmember Takahashi was 3-3 and 1-5s. I get that question from time to time, so that you can get into the telephone queue. Just a reminder that additional cards and calls will not be accepted once we begin general public comment. With all of that said, City Manager, Mr. Hess, do you have anything to report this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have one item to report. I'd like to call up our Community Development Director, Patrick Prescott. He's gonna talk a little bit about our new online solar permitting system.
Good evening, Mayor Schultz, members of the City Council. The Community Development Department is always looking for ways to improve service delivery to the community, and I'm not gonna steal Mario's thunder, but we have some new solar online permitting software that he's going to talk to you about. So I'm gonna introduce to you our Assistant Community Development, Community Development Director, Building Official, Mario Osuna, who is coming right up.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott. Mr. Osuna, welcome back.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Schultz, Vice Mayor Perez, and esteemed members of the council. My name is Mario Osuna, Assistant Director with the Community Development Department, representing the Building Division. And like Patrick said, I'm here today to, or here tonight to report to you an update on the progress of our department's instant solar permit online solution that we implemented about two and a half months ago. This implementation was a collaborative effort with the CDD's Building Division, RIT Department, BWP, and the Symbium Corporation. Our CDD online solar permit solution allows applicants to virtually build a code-compliant solar system while in real-time verifying for compliance with local and state codes. It took our team, collaborative team, about one year to, to work on this project, and our team worked very hard to, to ensure that one of the main focuses of the solution was the customer experience. So we were very mindful to take into consideration and implement integration with our current online payment and online permit system, to take into consideration BWP's solar system sizing requirements, right? So we, we want to make sure that we're, we're complying with those, and also to provide an, an online comprehensive step-by-step tutorial for, for applicants so that they may easily follow how to, how to apply for, for online solar permits. In the 10 weeks since going live with online solar permits, we've issued 72 permits, which amounts to about seven permits per week. Very importantly, we've cut down the average plan check processing time of a solar permit from about six weeks to one day. We've generated about $34,000 in permit revenue. We've saved $14,000 in plan check consultant fees. We streamline the experience for residents at the same while saving staff valuable processing time. And we've, we helped reduce low, or we helped to meet low-carbon emission goals by promoting the installation of solar systems while reducing the number of vehicle trips to the Building Division. Based on this initial success, we hope to next add residential electric vehicle charging stations to CDD's online permit offerings and taking advantage of another popular and low-threshold plan check permit that we can streamline for the community. That's it. We're just really excited with, with this instant success to, to staff's hard work and also just the very impactful reduction in the processing time of solar permits.
Outstanding report. Mr. Osuna, before you go down, any questions, brief questions from colleagues?
Just a giant thank you. No question. Thank you for doing that.
Awesome.
I'm sure a lot of people are gonna appreciate it. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Osuna. Mr. Hess, anything else?
No, thank you. The, real quick, though, that, that, it's important to note, six weeks to one day. That's pretty good. You still have to work with BWP to get the connection, so it's not, you know, it's not gonna happen, everything gonna happen in one day, but I, I did want to note, six weeks to one day is pretty darn good.
I would agree with that. Well done. Okay. Now is the time for joint general public comment. I will be calling out the speaker's name, as well as the person who's next in line to speak. Again, we have a, a chair right here in the front row, so if you're next in line, you can jump up, sit right there, and then you'll be ready to go in a timely manner once your time comes to speak. A timer is available on the podium, and I will note, this is also a last call for anyone who needs an interpreter. Otherwise, staff will be released. So show of hands, anyone need an interpreter? For the record, I'm seeing no requests. Thank you both so much for being here. You're welcome to leave. Persons may choose to use the first period of public comment to address an agendized report, but you will not be able to speak on that item following this segment. We ask, of course, that you state your name for the record. The general public comment period is now beginning, and no additional cards and no additional calls will be accepted. Madam City Clerk, how many public comment cards do we have for general public comment?
Twelve.
Okay. How many callers do we have in the queue?
One.
Okay, there being 13 total commenters, each speaker will have three minutes to address the council in compliance with the council's adopted public comment policy. Our first speaker this evening will be Maya Shavzen, followed by Mark Scroggs. And if I misstate anyone's name, please feel free to correct that before your time begins.
How do I operate the timer? It just starts?
It'll, great question. The timer will just start to run as soon as you start speaking.
Esteemed council members and staff, I'm Maya Shavzen. Thank you for listening. I spoke on September 10th on a potential ban on leaf blowers. On the 24th, I sent an email responding to the discussion and the report. I gathered them into documents handed to you today. The first step staff report lacked in three main areas. One, detailing the harms caused by two-stroke engines. Two, understanding the noise created by these engines, the decibel scale, and its effects on humans. And three, a survey of other jurisdictions, which is extremely pertinent in this case. I expanded on the first two points in the document submitted. The data on the damage to people and planet boggles the mind, but it is solid and longstanding. Workers in particular are sickened and harmed for weak financial reasoning. The recent economic study from Santa Cruz shows the clear advantages and amazing returns on investing in battery-powered tools, but voluntary adoption without the city's involvement is far too slow. You now have the chance to lead and connect residents and businesses as part of the transition. Outreach and education are essential to the process, so people see this is not a punishment, it is a benefit to all. Glendale transitioned all city properties away from gas-powered tools, not just leaf blowers, and they banned gas-powered blowers citywide within two years. Pasadena implemented a citywide ban within one year. And I ask, where is Burbank? Why not connect with counterparts in these cities to learn from their efforts? I'm sure their experience is extremely valuable. Please direct the staff's second step report to include these lessons. I would also ask that you remain open to banning other landscaping saws. The reason leaf blowers are being banned is the two-stroke engine. That's the source of extreme pollution and noise, but mowers, trimmers, whackers, and saws use the same engine. They all operate in tandem with blowers daily all over Burbank, so it makes no sense to look at only one tool this engine is attached to and not the others. Please direct staff to prepare an ordinance that includes more saws, or at the very least, draft a specific and timely framework to transition other equipment after gas-powered leaf blowers are banned. They can even use the same batteries purchased for the blowers. So alternatives and solution abound, yet the codes in place are not conducive to a peaceful, healthy life, something I believe the residents of Burbank deserve. Bans have been implemented around California for over 40 years, so it's well past time Burbank stops leaving its residents in the dust. Our neighbors prove it can be done, and much quicker than you think. All we need is the will and openness for change. A second step report should be brought to council before year's end. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Mark Scroggs, followed by Paul Derigo.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mark Scroggs. At last week's, last week, Laura Friedman hosted a Zoom, entertainment industry Zoom that was really, really good, and during it, one thing came up, the IATSE rep brought up one suggestion, boy, this loud, that something that we all can do regarding keeping productions here, maintaining them, bringing them in, is something actually I brought up with Councilmember Takahashi a few days before that, the Zoom. It's simple. We should try to be more welcoming, more excited, and more accommodating to local productions. I know you can't officially say you have to do it, but when I lived near the Grove, a lot of people weren't, and then they lost a lot of production, so people were just making life hell around them, you know? We can't require people to be nice, but it, it only helps bring people in, because it is word of mouth. And I've been to so many sets on so many locations over the years where people are very accommodating, people are very nice, people want to go back there and work again. I had that right now with a client who's about to go back to Canada to work outside of Toronto, because how wonderful they were. So it's something that we should just think about. And also, they were talking about cutting the red tape on permits, and I know we brought that up at different times, but that was something the IATSE people brought up. So I just wanted to mention that. Also, in Scientific America, of all publications, there was an article about getting out the vote, you know, registering, getting involved in your causes, getting involved with local politics, following up. It was, it was very good. I know a lot of people here do that sort of thing, but I recommend if you happen to see it online, it's really interesting. So that's it for tonight.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker is Paul Derigo, followed by David Donahue.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Paul Derigo. I live here in Burbank. My general comments today... My general comments today is, I'd like to ask the city council and the people of Burbank that we need to focus on local issues more than these general issues that really have no impact, and I'll be specific. One year ago, I spoke here today about the alley cleanup and the crews needed, that are way understaffed, and they can't get the work done. That was a year ago, and I'm just wondering, has anything been done about that? Have you supported the staff to clean up the alleys? Contrary to public opinion, this is going to be tough, but you cannot fix the housing problem. You cannot. If you go to a map of the rents of California, you will see all along the coast, the higher rents, and if you go inward, you're going to see lower rents. If you go to Vegas, you're going to see the houses are selling for much cheaper. This is a, this is a country issue, this is a federal issue, as well as a state issue. What you can do is make sure people play right, make sure people follow the laws, you can help them with the permits, the building permits, you can make sure that people are not slum lords and so forth, but to be tyrannical, to make sure that you get rents down somehow, it's inappropriate, it doesn't incentivize builders. This has been done, and the studies have been done ad nauseam, about forcing rent control. It's just the opposite. You want to help builders come in, you guys probably all know this already, but I'm just conveying to you my thoughts. And there's also the state of emergency in this area, especially with the animals at the animal shelters. I mean, a lot of people know that a lot of, we probably euthanized 40,000 or 50,000 animals in this area. They're also using animals across the border to bring in drugs. They literally will operate on a dog, they will cut the stomach open and pack drugs inside, and I have a lawyer who I'm working with who's got pictures of this. It's part of my work as a volunteer for animal advocacy, so I get to see some of this stuff, and I want to convey it to the populace and people who know what the issues are, so that we're aware of it. I'd also like to ask the city council and the people of Burbank also to consider developing a elderly support syndicate that is insured, so people who are local partisan artisans who want to contribute to their community, they can help somebody who needs a dripping faucet fixed, or some paint done, and any issues with liabilities would be handled by an insurance policy covered by the syndicate. Not that the government does that, but the people do that because they're vested. Another suggestion I have is on libraries, instead of trying to say, let's force the minimum wage, that's poverty. Let's, why not we use the libraries to offer entrepreneurial classes, business classes for people to learn how to make more money? $15 an hour, $20 an hour, that is poverty. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment, and I apologize for misstating the last name. Derigo, correct? Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have David Donahue, followed by Shawna Millman.
Mayor Schultz, councilmember staff, this is a very difficult topic for me to talk to you about, and one where I'm going to try to maintain my composure, because I've been having a very difficult time trying to do it. Prior to last week, I had no idea that there existed a social media page called Burbank Bigots. Before the Pride event that I attended, and was very happy to be invited to be a member of, myself, Christopher Vazotti, Annie McQuirian, and other people had never attended this, and we were very happy, and I came to this lectern, to this dais, and I promoted the participation of Burbank Pride. I was excited to be there, I was excited to be a participant. I want to share with you my experience before that. In the weeks leading up to it, I did not know, but I was beginning to share, people were sharing with me screenshots of the Burbank bigots, where certain leaders of the community were saying absolutely horrendous and hateful derogatory comments to myself and other members of the community. I did not want to go to that page, but I did because of the allegations of defamation and misinformation about myself and others. I went there and I was horrified. A moment ago, before this council meeting, Chair Coombs of the Police Commission testified to you, spoke from this leg to you, about the violence that can happen from negative rhetoric. The people in the organizers, one of the organizers of Burbank Pride reached out to me and said, David, I suggest you call the police department, I feel there could be violence against you. I did. To have advocacy for hate has no place in Burbank. There are people right now that are leaders in this community where hate is part of their language. To the credit of Cheryl Weaver, who is a member of the Burbank Pride, to Tracy, who's their president, bless them, they defended myself, they defended these other peoples, and they actually said to the accusers, as I understand, show me anything that supports your negative connotations to David Donahue, Chris Vazotti, Annie McQuirian, and others. These are leaders in our community. These are people that have taken the time to volunteer, there's time to do something for their community, and it is absolutely horrible and disgusting to see without proof, without evidence, allegations against myself and them, to make it public. It is actionable. My wife is an attorney. She has given me the permission to make this claim, and this assertion, to those who have defamed me, you are now on notice. If you represent an organization, which I will not say now, I reserve the right, under the laws of California, to defend myself and my family, you are now on notice.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Shawna Millman, followed by Molly DeArminoli. I may have gotten that one wrong, I apologize, but Shawna, you're up first.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, City Council and Police Commission members. My name is Shawna Millman, and I spoke to the Police Commission in May as a parent who lives across the street from Dolores Swer to Middle School. Today, I'm here speaking to you as a representative on behalf of the Association of Burbank Council PTA, representing our current 5,600-plus members who are concerned for the safety of the BUSD students. The Wild West is a description frequently used by parents when discussing drop-off and pickup times. While the schools individually inform and promote families to follow traffic and parking rules, there has been, and there has been some police presence. The start of the school year has seen safety and traffic violations constantly being ignored around our Burbank schools. Horrifically, there have been multiple reports of people having been hit. Although we are not sure how many reports have been made to law enforcement, as students who are hit are usually afraid of getting in trouble, therefore are unlikely to report the incident. This is unacceptable. The excessive amount of safety and traffic violations that have been occurring during drop-offs, pickups, and for special events needs to stop. In July, Lieutenant Fromer presented the back-to-school safety update, identifying some recommendations to address safety and traffic concerns. The Association of Burbank Council PTA would like to know when these recommendations will start to take effect, and what else can be done to help keep our community safe. Our association would also like to request school site visits specifically during the busiest times, the 10 minutes before school starts, and the 10 minutes before and after the end of the school day, to truly understand our concern. We have also compiled data from the annual traffic studies from the school site safety plans for year review, and will be forwarding that to you soon. Additionally, a Huerta staff member has been donating her time as a crossing guard to ensure the safety of the kids in the morning. No one is assisting the kids in the afternoon. If this staff member is hit or something happens to her, school liability does not apply. Rather than putting our BUSD employees at risk, is it possible to assign specific crossing guards or traffic flow individuals around all the schools rather than just the elementary schools? We believe if funds are the limitation, a previous recommendation of increasing fines in school zones may account for this while also discouraging infractions. Also, please start ticketing. So far this year, I have not seen many, if any, tickets issued, nor has parking enforcement had a presence. Even more disappointing is that while there has been quite a bit of police presence during the first week of school, sadly, there has been none since. As previously stated, I feel the issue is how to get parents to do their part to ensure the safety of our children. Burbank Council PTA is more than willing to help derive or enhance a comprehensive list of parking and driving safety regulations and guidelines that should be followed when around schools, that can be translated and distributed to all families. While the vast majority do what they need to do to keep kids safe, you only need one to create a tragic situation. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Molly DeArminoli.
I decline.
Oh, okay, thank you. And Leah Wood, do you want to speak, Leah, wherever you are?
I decline.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then I have Catherine Moser or Maser?
I decline.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Is it because I'm mispronouncing names that badly? I apologize. I did not do well in school in that regard. Okay. Brenda Eterbeek, followed by, I guess it's going to be either Britt Vaughn or Gloria Salas from the Zonta Club of Greater Burbank Area.
Okay, I don't decline. Good evening, city council, staff, and anybody left from Police Commission. My name is Brenda Eterbeek, and I'm thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I'm here to address a critical issue affecting our community, which is traffic enforcement around school sites during drop-off and pickup hours. As we all know, school zones are bustling areas during the morning and afternoon as parents drop off and pick up their children. Unfortunately, these times are often see increase in traffic violations, including speeding, double parking, and disregarding crosswalks, and many more lovely infractions if you take the time to go visit any school site. This not only creates congestion, but more importantly poses significant safety risk for our children. I am urging the council and the Police Commission to prioritize enforcement of traffic laws in these areas by deploying more officers during peak, drop-off, and pickup times to monitor traffic and ensure compliance with the speed limits and parking regulations. The safety of Burbank's youngest citizens should always be our top priority by implementing stronger enforcement and promoting awareness. I believe we can create a safer environment for our students and a peace of mind for their families. As a teacher, I have worked at a school where we had a tragic vehicular cause death of a student, and it was devastating. I urge our community to be proactive rather than reactive. I would never want our families to experience the loss of a student because of their choices that the drivers make around the schools during drop-off and pickup. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you for your comment.
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, the three individuals who declined to speak, I believe were in favor and supporting the prior two speakers, just so we have that on record.
Oh, thank you for that. Yes, yes, that was my understanding as well. Thank you for catching that. So next, we have, will it be Britt Vaughn, Britt Vaughn from the Zonta Club of the Greater Burbank Area, followed by Joe Pimienta, and for the record, Britt is accompanied by Gloria Salas and BUSD Vice President Dr. Armand Agakonian.
Wonderful. Good evening, Mayor Schultz, Vice Mayor Perez, esteemed council members, and City Manager Hess. My name is Britt Vaughn, I'm a member of the Zonta Club of Burbank Area, and thank you, Mayor Schultz, for also introducing Dr. Agakonian and Gloria Salas. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I'm pleased to be here to talk about the powerful documentary Scars Unseen that Zonta Club of Burbank Area will be screening on October 10th at the Colony Theater. This film sheds light on the experiences of three domestic violence survivors, revealing the often hidden scars left by abuse, and showcasing the incredible strength and resilience of those who have endured it. By hosting this screening during Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we raise awareness, break silence surrounding domestic violence, and inspire hope for survivors and their families. We're grateful for the existence of the city's Domestic Violence Task Force, which demonstrates your commitment to addressing this critical issue in our community. The Zonta Club of Burbank Area is a proud member of the task force, and it's a responsibility that we do not take lightly. Your participation in this event on October 10th would send a strong message of solidarity and support to survivors and their loved ones, reinforcing the idea that our community stands united against domestic violence. We invite you to join us for the screening and the panel discussion that will follow, featuring local experts and advocates who will provide insights and resources for those in need. If you are interested in this event, or interested in the Zonta Club of Burbank Area, please visit us at zontaburbank.org. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Joe Pimienta, followed by Elizabeth Bax.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, staff, and everyone present in the chamber, thank you for being here. I'm just going to start off, first of all, wanting to thank everyone who put together the Burbank Pride that happened on Saturday. It was a wonderful event. Everyone that attended and everyone that participated seemed to be having a wonderful time. The performances were amazing, so I think I said this last year, but I'll say it again, what a great thing for Burbank to put together, and more of that, please. I hope the event comes back next year because it was just fabulous all around. Personally, I was participating with the Burbank Tenant Union booth, and we had a lot of activity going on in our booth. We had a lot of people coming over, both asking us questions about what's been going on in Burbank lately, also asking us questions of like, of what we've been doing. We had different conversations with different landlords, we had different conversations with different housing providers, we had different conversations with other homeowners, and as well with tenants, listening to their concerns and listening to everything that they had to tell us. So overall, it was great, but I'm also going to use that as a segue that into the topic that I put in, which is, well, it's October 1st, and the outreach has ended, 90 days, as you all, as you all have put together. The five-town hall meetings went very well, so once again, I'm taking the opportunity to really thank everyone that put those together. Anyone that puts together an event knows how difficult it is to go through the logistics and making sure that the conversation stayed respectful, and make sure that the conversation stick to the plan of those meetings. So seriously, to everyone involved in putting them together, thank you very much, but also thank you to everyone who attended. Those meetings were attended by both tenants, landlords, and homeowners, because again, they had questions into what's going on, what is a potential rent cap mean, what would it look like? And special thanks to Joe McDougall and Mary Bell Leland, who answered all the questions. I mean, it was originally planned to be half an hour, but it clearly went for a little longer than that, and those questions were answered thoroughly. So it was a great learning opportunity for everyone who attended, so just want to say, you know, directly in public, thank you for that. And yeah, I mean, like, after all that, I guess we are looking forward to see what happens now that we've gotten all this information. If my understanding is correct, results are coming back on October the 15th. We are excited to see what happens because, you know, it's been 22 months of this conversation, at least, you know, here in the chamber, so we're very curious to see what the new direction is. With my last 30 seconds, I just want to say once again, thank you for your work, thank you for your service, but also want to remind everyone that the Animation Guild is still currently in negotiation, so we want to wish them a lot of success, because, one, it's a dispute that they are carrying out, they have a lot of threats coming up, but also, as everything, it ties also to housing. So again, we are really hoping that they get a fair deal, and for those of you who are not familiar with the hashtag, stand with animation. Thank you very much, enjoy your evening.
Thank you for your comment. Next, I have Elizabeth Bax, followed by James Ingram.
Good evening, council and staff. And the reason I put Elizabeth on my card is because it sounds better than Liz Bax. Liz Bax, I like Elizabeth Bax. Anyway, so the potential rent cap for outreach is now complete, as you just heard, and thank you to staff for your hard, hard work. They all personally know how I feel. I do have to comment about the, all the questions were not always answered, but they could not be answered. There's a lot of questions that are up in the air that won't be answered until you guys make these decisions. So a lot of things they were left with, like, they didn't quite know what rent control meant, and it's just because we don't know yet. You don't, you haven't presented that. But here are some of the things that are left to do. The city council must find out how this will impact the city government by cost, exactly how much. That's one thing that was left unsure of. How will this impact the social climate, like the quality of life? How will it impact the economic climate, like the business community? Will we see deterioration in the future? This needs to be done by surveys and research. The city council must look at creating more subsidies. You must find ways to get money to the people who are in need of it, instead of just creating a rent cap. If the need is for affordable housing, then that's what we must create more of. How much affordable housing is about to come online, and how long will they stay affordable? You should do a survey with research on how many mom-and-pop rental properties are thinking of selling to big corporations if this rent cap goes in to existence. You must do the research and the surveys that will show how all the new properties coming online will affect Burbank housing. Will the housing market correct itself? One quick thing that's not about this, I wanted to just make a small comment about the short-term housing, I cannot see if I don't have my glasses on, the short-term rental properties. I understood that the city was recommending option one, which was to allow the short-term rentals, and, but the council is suggesting something different. I would only ask that the council consider host short-term rentals, which would mean that if I live on the property and I have another, like, studio that I would like to do a short-term rental, I am right there, I am... I am on campus. I can write in the Airbnb what they can't do, and how much, if they violate, I will charge them by the hour. So I would like you to consider this, because there's a lot of stuff going on, like, with all the other things we're allowed to do with our properties, as far as ADUs, and it's going to create the parking no matter what. Thank you so much for listening to me, I really appreciate it.
Thank you for your comment. The last in-person comment card that I have is James Ingram, and then after that, we'll be going to our one caller on the phone. Mr. Ingram, whenever you're ready.
Oh, yeah, thanks. First, I want to say thanks to the council. I know it's been a kind of tumultuous few months with some hot-button topics. I don't envy your position at all, and thanks for dealing with that for the rest of us. I also wanted to go on the record and just commend our fresh responders, our fire department, our police department, and also city staff, BWP, waste management, et cetera, especially through operating through this heat wave. It's hard enough keeping a city running when it's not 115 degrees. That being said, my name is James. I'm a homeowner here in Burbank, as the council maybe, hopefully, knows. I'm a community leader for the Livable Communities Initiative, and I helped draft the executive summary that is being reported on tonight from planning. I obviously support the city in moving forward with implementation of these policy changes, and I hope to see the council direct staff to move forward with that process tonight. I believe these are common sense, gentle changes that really unlock the vision that we, and frankly, the Burbank 2035 vision share, by amending certain building codes that unfortunately stifle certain types of development, and I'm talking specifically about missing middle or gentle density. Unfortunately, some of the code that still exists in the Burbank-specific building code prevents, still prevents this type of housing from being developed. So I'm here to support this effort, and I'm just going to finish up by also thanking the planning department for considering these changes and for presenting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. That now completes in-person public comment, and we'll be moving to our call-in public comment. For our callers, or in this case, singular caller, please remember to lower the volume on your TV or computer and take your phone off of speaker setting when you deliver public comments, so that we can hear you loudly and clearly. Madam City Clerk, let's send the first and, I believe, only caller through.
We did get a second call during the period.
Did they make it in time?
They did.
Okay. So to both of our callers, all of that, send the first one through, please.
The first caller is Nolan Sutherland.
Nolan, you're on with the city council.
Hi, yeah, I also wanted to, like James, talk about the Livable Communities Initiative. My family and I live in Burbank, we own our home, and we are enthusiastically in favor of the initiative and of building in general. As you know, we need more housing, and the housing that is proposed in this initiative looks beautiful. I also want to address that often homeowners seem to worry about increased density in their area, but our home is on Chandler Boulevard, and we love having access to the nearby Magnolia and Burbank Boulevard businesses and the greater density. We can walk to restaurants, we can bike to strip stores, and my kids are able to go to school using the bike path. This sort of density is beautiful, and we love this sort of proposal, and we hope the city implements it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next caller, please.
The next caller is Brittany Curran.
Brittany, you're on with the city council.
Hi, council members. I hope you're all having a good evening. I am a homeowner in Burbank, small business owner, and I went to all the schools here growing up, and I am also fervently in favor of the Livable Communities Initiative planned for Burbank. And I was originally going to come in tonight. My approach with my statement was going to be a way to express and describe the measurably positive impact of LCI's development plan for a wonderful city, but then I thought, everyone here shares the same desire. None of you are up there for hours and hours a day because you hate Burbank. You're up there because we all want there to be a higher quality of life in our city. And there may be details that are a little bit different, but all of this stuff is really meaningful, is, it is exactly the same. And that's why I want to say first, so Mayor Scholz, I'm going to cheekily grant myself the license here to pilfer your own words and borrow them as my own promenade, and before you brace yourselves, don't worry, I'm not about to hit you with using your own words against you in a ridiculously and comically out of context way, so you can relax. So a quote he said, and I got this from the LCI website if someone wants to read all of it, is "LCI presents a bold and innovative vision for the future of urban growth in Los Angeles." And now, the reason why I'm quoting your words instead of my own is because I don't think I could have summed that up better myself, because the Livable Communities Initiative is bold, and it is innovative. And one of the things that I know about improvement, development, and growth in a community in a way that's actionable, in a way that actually makes a difference, and why would anyone here, like, everyone, not even council members, but residents, we're all here because we actually want to make a difference? And so what I'm trying to stress here is that the LCI approach, I think, is the only effective way to actually make bold change, and I think anything less will be robbing all of us of what we actually truly want for our city. And there are two imperative prerequisites essentially for meaningful action, especially on the scale of an actual literal community, and that is, to go back to your quote, Mayor, innovation and boldness of mind and of implementation. And so I think you agree. I'm just asking you, let's be bold, let's make Burbank friggin' awesome, awesomer. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Much too kind in your description of my words, but thank you. Ms. Clark, do we have any other comment?
That is it.
Okay. That concludes the joint general public comment, period. Now is the time for a brief response from the council, the city manager, and/or the city attorney. Would anyone like to begin? Yes, Mr. Hess.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Let's start.
You're here? This is great. Okay.
If I could call up Captain Corneals to talk a little bit about the traffic and the school situation as far as safety.
Welcome back, Captain.
The number one concern in this city typically is traffic. Anytime I talk to people on the community, the number one concern is traffic, and so we are constantly putting out spot fires, and I will get with the folks who have concerns, and Lieutenant Frohman and I, with my other patrol assets, will come up with a plan to address those concerns and have a more visible presence on a scheduled basis.
Captain, I think that was a great response, just while you're up here to save you the trip. Any quick follow-ups? Okay. I always pick on zezes. I'm going to go with Councilmember Anthony, and then Councilmember Mullins.
Captain Kremlins, or maybe our city manager knows this, what are, how do we determine crossing guards and the hiring of new crossing guards and where they're positioned? Do we have a?
I can speak to that with some knowledge of it. Historically, the crossing guards have been deployed at the elementary schools because that was the area of the greatest need, especially based on the students and their knowledge of traffic laws and their understanding of how to safely cross the street. So we have a scheduled budgeted number of crossing guards to cover the elementary schools. Historically, the middle schools and high schools were not covered because there was an expectation that the students had a better understanding of the rules of the road and how to safely get themselves across. But with that being said, with some additional input, we can always look at making a change there.
And that, all that funding is in the city's police department budget.
Okay. Captain Corneals, sorry, Captain Kremlins was here earlier.
Not at all.
Yeah, I think that was, yeah, that was my only concern on that issue.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Mullins.
Thank you. Would this plan also include high schools, junior high schools?
Yes.
To take a look at?
Yes.
Because I've heard from multiple parents, and there's no secret, I live around Burrows High School, extremely concerned about what goes on in there, so thank you.
Yes.
When properly agendized, the plan would include additional.
Just when I forgot you're here. I got you.
Mr. Mayor, may I add, unless they show up to council and speak to us about adding them in there, so I think.
Still, when properly agendized.
Well, unless the council declares an urgency, but that's an entirely different matter.
We won't go into that.
No, we won't. Captain, thank you very much for the report out. Mr. Hess, anything else? Okay, thank you. Colleagues, who'd like to begin with response to public comment? Yes, Councilmember Anthony.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Maya Shavzen, we had the discussion about the leaf blowers. You were right, there was some parts missing from the report. I think we did an accurate job of asking staff to come back for that second step, to really dive into all the stuff that you were talking about, including the things that you were mentioning here in your letter. So I look forward to really taking a deep dive, not just in what we mentioned, but the stuff that you're talking about as well, so thank you for that. Mr. Derigo, you did mention a number of issues. I do want to just quickly cover the animal shelter comment that you made. Yes, the county of Los Angeles and the city of Los Angeles have had troubles with their animal shelters over the years. We are doing very well here in Burbank, though. If you have any questions on that, please go to the Burbank Animal Shelter website and look at all of the stuff that we've been doing, all of our caretaking for our animals. We are doing exorbitantly well here in this city. And I think the next time we come back for a change in any public comment, I think we should require our public commentators to quote the mayor. I think that would be perfect. And then lastly, for the second time tonight, I am in complete agreement with you, Mr. Donahue. As someone who has also been accused without evidence on social media, I believe that it is highly inappropriate to do so. In the earlier meeting with the police commission, I suggested that we take a look at our department's response to social media and other types of comments that could lead to possible incidences or possible reports. I'm very disappointed that that is happening in our community. I have seen it before. We have shut it down as a body in this community, but I think there do need to be more guardrails because, yes, I have seen it get out of hand, and I am deeply saddened that you have to deal with that. So you have my sympathy. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Takahashi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, everyone who came out tonight to speak. Always interested to hear what your concerns are. Thank you to those who called in for the items that were for the future agenda item. We'll talk about it then. Oh, also, thank you to all those who sent emails and who had meetings. Ms. Shavzen, thank you so much for meeting with me and talking about this issue and providing information tonight, and same, Mr. Scroggs, thank you for the meeting. I'm not sure if he's here still. If you're listening, thank you for your meeting. It's always helpful to have these longer meetings and get into deeper discussions, so if anyone in the community wants to talk more about what's important to you, please feel free to reach out. Also, I, you know, the last speaker on the phone said, ended with, "Let's make Burbank friggin' awesomer." I think we should make that the new city motto, PIO, so just to concern over there, he's not paying attention.
You can't advocate for that item.
I know, I can't.
You have to ask for an additional agenda item.
Unless the council finds a public urgency.
Okay.
And it came to the council's, the staff's attention after the post.
I've been publicly reprimanded for that, but I will be, keep it, I will keep it in mind. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Of course. Sorry, Joe, just trying to keep you accountable there. All right. Councilmember Mullins.
Thank you for keeping me accountable.
And thank you for keeping me, keeping you, keeping me accountable.
I think, Mr. Mayor, by the end of this night, we're going to have a long items to add to the future agenda items, since our city attorney asking us to do it, so be prepared, because we might end up doing it. Thank you to the Zonta members for being here and as a co-chair on the DB Task Force. This is great. We get the word out, and we encourage people to go out and participate, so we would definitely make sure we're supporting in any way we can. Unfortunately, personally, I cannot make it. I will be out of town, but my heart will be with you because I strongly believe in the mission and what we're doing to educate our community. With that, everyone else that spoke, thank you for coming out. We will address some of the items on the agenda tonight, and as the captain addressed the concerns for traffic, so we'll move forward with that, and thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you to the folks who spoke on the agenda item. We will address your comments when we reach that report. Thank you, Maya, for coming back, for sharing a well-detailed packet of information. I would also say, I know you are very well-versed in these, in this issue, so I'd encourage you to, let's have another conversation, and also talk with staff. I do think they could benefit from hearing your input greatly before that second step report. So thank you for being here and advocating for the health and well-being of our community. Thank you to our PTA moms and our parents who are here in the room. We're excited that you're here. Thank you for sharing the traffic issues. I also live by a school, I see them. I know Captain Cornelius came to speak to you all a little bit. I know it's the beginning of many conversations. I'd also love to set up a meeting. Let's talk. And then, let's see, to the Zonta folks, thank you for being here and representing and sharing the event that's coming up. I'm excited, and I hope the whole community goes. And Gloria, happy birthday again. And then, the final thing I will say, a couple of our speakers mentioned pride, and I just want to congratulate the organizers. It was a wonderful event, and I know that safety was a number-one priority, so I am very much glad and proud of the event organizers, because there was not a single issue at the end of the day that occurred the day of the event, and I think that speaks volumes to the work that they put in previously, because it was a tough week for them, and I just want to highlight that for them. And ultimately, it was an event full of love and happiness, so I'm glad about that. Those are all my comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everybody who came to speak.
All right, perfect. Thank you all, colleagues, for your comments. I'll try to be brief, so Maya, thank you as well for the comprehensive notes. We, no, we really appreciate it. I know Mr. Bax comes here regularly. When you provide the council your written commentary, by no means is it a requirement, but it is helpful. I am more of a visual learner, so to be able to read and follow along helps me, so I just encourage everyone, you do not have to, but it's a wonderful way to supplement your oral public comment.
Mr. Mayor, if people do bring supplemental oral comment for paper, how many copies would they need?
I believe it's a minimum of eight, if I'm not mistaken. Oh, I'm sorry, 10. Wow, Mayor's getting it wrong tonight. 10 copies, preferably. If you only show up with one, I don't think we'll turn it away, but 10 gets it to everyone a whole lot faster.
If we only get one turned in, it's duplicated and it's distributed the next day.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Clark. To Mr. Scroggs, again, you're one of our regulars. You have come and been a fierce advocate for the entertainment industry, so thank you for continuing to show up every single week and to ensure that the council is focusing, focused on and prioritizing what we can do to support our entertainment economy. Mr. Derigo, thank you. A lot of great suggestions, always a good reminder that all good government starts locally, and I'll leave it there, because there could be many future agenda items, just based on your comment alone. That was fantastic. To Shawna and Brenda and everyone else who came, on behalf of the PTA, thank you for raising awareness to this really important issue. I hope that your conversation, albeit brief, with Captain Cornelius was the start of many more productive conversations. And, Mr. City Manager, when we have our next joint subcommittee meeting, the vice mayor and I, with the school board president and vice president and the superintendent, perhaps that could be a point of continued conversation, so just a suggestion. To Joe and Elizabeth, thank you both for coming to talk about the issue of rent control. As you know, it'll be on the agenda in two weeks' time, so I won't comment anymore, but please tell everyone, you know, if you have a thought on it, you can email the council, you can call in that night, you can give public comment, and there could be a lot of public comment that evening, so it's better to start now. Start right now. We're giving your feedback to the council. It gives us two weeks to digest it, and we'll go from there. So thank you. To James and Nolan and Brittany, thank you all for your advocacy. I'll save any other comments till later, but again, very generous to quote me, there's many more quotable people than myself, but thank you, and I'll save any other comment for there. Oh, and then, I almost forgot, to Britt and Armand and to Gloria, by the way, happy birthday again, Gloria. Just wanted to plug again that what a great event this is going to be on October 10th, which is a Thursday, at 6:00 PM for the reception, followed by the 6:30 film screening and the 7:45 Q&amp;A with the director of Scars Unseen. That's going to be a phenomenal event at the Colony Theater, so I just wanted to plug that one more time. And then, last but not least, Mr. Donahue, I wanted to thank you for coming forward and sharing your experience and your story with the council. And then last but not least, Mr. Donahue, I wanted to thank you for coming forward and sharing your experience and your story with the council. All I can say is that in my four years on this council, I have seen my colleagues, I have seen staff members, and I've seen other community members, including private individuals like yourself, been the target of really vicious, salacious allegations, online attacks, doxing. And so all I can ask the community is, I understand we're in a hyper-partisan political environment. We're on the eve of a national election. And as I said earlier, we've seen multiple assassination attempts on a presidential candidate. I don't come from any superior position. I just, as a community member, who very much worries about the world that my two kids will inherit, as you all worry about the next generation too, I just implore everyone to appeal to our better angels, to dial down the rhetoric, to embrace that we can have differences of opinion and viewpoint, and yet still love one another as neighbors and understand that we have much more in common than what divides us. So it may seem common sense to so many, but I just, I encourage us all to handle and to approach each other with love and acceptance and tolerance, and to say no to some of our darker inclinations that I think expose itself at times in this community. And so, Mr. Donahue, thank you for coming out, and maybe if any good comes of it, perhaps we can, it's a good reminder for all of us tonight. So I appreciate you coming forward.
Mr. Mayor, may I add something to your comments?
As long as you don't quote me.
I am not gonna quote you, no.
I wouldn't either.
I do want to remind everyone about the proclamation that was issued by our Burbank Coordinating Council, and I encourage everyone to read that proclamation where it says Burbank has no hate. And I think it's, if we follow that motto and we look at that all the time, we should not have hate among us, and we should not have these comments or anyone to come to our council meeting to let us know what happened, that these things are happening. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. And of course, folks, just stick to the facts. That's generally good. We don't have to resort to making things up and name-calling. We can always stick to the facts. And just embrace that you can have a spirited debate and you can disagree without being disagreeable. So anyway, enough of the self-lecturing. That is all that I have. Any other comment, response? Nope. Okay. We now consider the consent calendar. As a reminder, the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. Madam City Plurk, would you please read the consent calendar for this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have nine items on tonight's consent agenda. Item one, adoption of an ordinance amending Title V, Police and Public Safety, Chapter Three, Article Three of the Burbank Municipal Code, establishing a prohibition on carrying or possessing specified items while attending or participating in any public demonstration, rally, protest, picket line, or public assembly. Item two is adoption of a resolution acknowledging receipt of the fiscal year 2023/2024 Fire Inspection Performance Report. Item three is adoption of a resolution authorizing the execution of an amendment to an agreement with Stern Dahl Enterprises Incorporated to extend the term and increase the cost in the amount of $450,000 to provide as-needed roadway signing and striping services. Item four is adoption of a resolution authorizing acceptance of a grant agreement with the Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance for $200,000 and amending the fiscal year 2024/2025 budget by appropriating funds. Item five is adoption of a resolution authorizing acceptance of funds from the State Citizens Option for Public Safety Program in the amount of $307,394.25 and amending the fiscal year 2023/2024 budget by appropriating funds. Item six is acceptance of a donation to the city of Burbank for four parcels of land. Assessor's parcel numbers 5618-011-005, 5618-011-010, 5618-001-011, and 5618-001-012 from the Third Amendment Two and Complete Restatement of the Melvin Hoffman Revocable Living Trust, dated November 3rd, 2017. Item seven is approval to enter into a three-year enterprise agreement with Environmental Systems Research Institute Incorporated for Geographical Information Systems Licensing. Item eight is approval of a support position on a resolution relating to fair and equal treatment of all governmental officials at all levels at the 2024 League of California Cities Conference. And item nine is approval of the use of reserve funds in the Councilmember Travel Expense Allotment C, unassigned, for travel in 2024. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Clark. Councilmember Anthony?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on our conversation in the prior meeting and on the advice of the council, I will not be adding any amendments or changes to tonight's calendar. So with that, I move to adopt the consent as a whole.
Second.
Okay, before we go to a vote, I actually have a question regarding the Cal Cities Resolution. Mr. Hess, would that be, who'd be the best representative to speak to that resolution?
Maybe me. Go for it.
All right. First of all, just for public consumption, could you just offer a brief 30-second overview of the item, just so folks know what I'm referring to?
Sure. Every year, the League of California Cities has their annual conference, and at that time, the cities are able to submit different resolutions. This year, there happens to be just one resolution. It's a pretty straightforward resolution, and it's called Fair and Equal Treatment of All Government Officials Statewide. So what the intent is from, I believe Glendora was the city that started the petition, was to any law that a state lawmaker would pass that was imposed upon a local government, that those laws would also take into effect with state officials as well. So that's the fair and equal treatment. So that's it in a nutshell.
Okay, I have a brief question and a brief comment, and then we can proceed to any other comment or just a vote. The question is, I believe on page two of the staff report, there was a comment from Emmanuel Jones &amp; Associates, which is our advocate firm based in Sacramento. And while I think generally supportive, they did note that there could be an issue with the resolution. Could you speak to that?
From my understanding, it can be a little vague. That was their general sense. We feel that that may be cleaned up as part of during the resolution, once it actually goes to committee, but we still support the general concept. It is a league resolution, so it's somewhat non-binding, but we support the resolution in general.
Okay. So I'll just, thank you very much, Mr. Hess. I'll just give my brief comment. I'll be voting no on this item, and the reason that I'll be voting no is that while I support the spirit of the resolution, which is to emphasize the importance of local control and decision-making, I take the comments from Emmanuel Jones &amp; Associates very seriously. There are two issues with the resolution. There are many contexts in which it's unclear when it will apply and not apply. And I've also noted that there are concerns about unintended impacts on certain areas of state legislation, including the environment. And so while I think ultimately it will get workshopped in Cal Cities to a point where it could be passed, I feel a little uncomfortable as a voting delegate having my colleagues direct me to support something that could in fact be changed by the time it's voted. And so just as a matter of precaution and policy, I, you know, I'd rather vote in accordance with our adopted legislative platform and wait to see the final version. So for that reason, I will be voting no on that item, but that's a matter of personal preference. Yes, Councilmember Anthony?
Just to piggyback on that, the differences between state law and the different counties that also have their hand in local elections and local candidates, I feel that there is a sort of Swiss cheese effect that happens, and so I will also be voting no.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Anthony, did you want to pull this item so we can discuss it?
Only if there's any more substantive discussion. I just wanted to explain why I would be voting no on an item of consent. But if there's consensus to move forward, we're perfectly fine to cast my vote.
Well, I do have a question, since you pulled the item and you're talking about it.
I did not pull the item. I just offered a comment.
You offered your comment, because I just wanted to maybe dive a little bit more to understand, because I took it as if what the resolution indicates, that what applies to local elected officials should apply to state representatives as well in regards to the filing. So I didn't see anything that, based on the League's recommendation, that is not something we should be doing, I think.
Sure.
So I'm not sure what the issues are, but.
Yeah, I'll try to offer a very brief response. And Mr. McDougall, if you feel that we're broaching the point where it needs to be pulled for more substantive discussion, let me know.
That's a matter for the mayor and the council's discretion?
Okay, as long as you don't feel that there's anything inappropriate, I'll just simply say that in a nutshell, I, as the voting representative, represent the council in voting on this issue. And there's two issues I have with it. What is before us is not the final draft. And I've been through this process. I've sat on the Resolutions Committee of Cal Cities. This could be chopped up significantly, and so while we may all share a common point of interest in the spirit of the resolution, it could change substantially. And as we talked about even tonight on another agenda item, the modification of a few words could have a significant impact. I would feel more comfortable, should this be adopted tonight, from my perspective, I am directed to support this, no matter how it's amended. I would feel more comfortable giving our city manager the discretion, as it's amended, to consult with the legislative platform to ensure maximum flexibility. If it changes in a way that's even, you know, marginally different than what we're all contemplating right now, I'm gonna be bound to vote for it. So for me, it comes from that perspective, and then separately, again, I rely on the advice of Emmanuel Jones &amp; Associates. I think that while it's, I understand the spirit of it, there are still some unanswered questions about its impact on other areas of state law. Yes, Councilmember Anthony?
I just want to ask one quick question. It's a non-binding resolution. Mr. City Attorney, so even if we don't pass it, if we don't pass this agenda item in front of us today, the mayor, at a later point, when he is allowed to vote on it, could vote yes on it if it seems appropriate at the time?
Well, we are providing direction. The council's providing direction to the voting delegate, which right now is the mayor. So whatever that direction is, that's, the delegate's supposed to vote that way.
Supposed to vote.
Yeah, supposed to vote that way.
But if we don't vote on this, he could vote yes or no. He has the option at the time.
The only thing I would add is, I could, but I would still feel bound by the recommendation of the city manager and the legislative platform. I guess what I'm arguing is, I would rather, until we see a final version, have the flexibility to consult with the city manager, who will be in attendance, and compare that to the legislative platform. Because if we're strictly speaking, saying, "You direct me to approve this resolution, and it changes substantively in a way we don't like," we've now given more direct direction to me to vote for the resolution. And until I see a final draft, I just don't feel comfortable with that.
So the question is, do we think this is, this could change between now and the 16th of October, when the League Conference is in effect?
It may change during the conference. They do have a, they basically do review the existing resolutions, and there may be walk-on resolutions during that time. So there is an opportunity where it can be amended at the conference, during the conference.
We won't have that language before us if it's amended at the conference, so.
In no case will we have the language before the conference.
Right, so, but we do have a language before us tonight. So is it possible to say, giving you the authority to vote on it, including the League's recommendation for the amendment?
And I will say that our state advocacy firm did support it. They do have, I think the issue is kind of how to put it in practice can be a little bit difficult, but they are supportive of the resolution.
Understood. I'll go to the Vice Mayor, and then if there's any comment from Councilmember Takahashi.
To the point of the mayor and a possible complete gut and change of this resolution, because it can happen on the floor. Is it, did I just call you the Vice Mayor? I'm sorry.
No, I don't.
Okay, I said mayor. Can, would it be possible for us to make a motion to, to ask the mayor, or to make a motion to support this resolution as written, with room to consult with the city attorney and our legislative advocates in the case of a substantial change?
Prior to them voting, yes, and I would change it to, not the mayor, I'd change it to the voting, whoever the voting.
Voting delegate, right. Could be me.
And I think that's very much what I was alluding to earlier, is if we approve this tonight, including any additional changes, the voting delegate, which would be Mr. Mayor, I'm assuming, that would have the authority to do it if we can add consulting with the city attorney or the city manager.
Sorry, Councilmember Takahashi, do you have anything you want to add, or do you feel comfortable? Okay. Got it. Last question, Mr. Hess, and then I think we've fully talked this one through. Regardless of the vote tonight, correct me if I'm wrong, the city's adopted legislative platform does clearly state a preference for local control, and I am bound, as a voting delegate, to adhere to that, correct?
Absolutely. I mean, it's, local control is kind of the foundation of our legislative platform. And if council gives you direction to vote a certain way, that's gonna be hard for you to do something different.
Yeah, so that, my colleagues, my point is, I think the legislative platform already binds me. I have a stronger preference for maximum flexibility to consult with Mr. Hess. But I've made my point. I think we all have. We can proceed to a vote, unless there's any other comment on any other matter on the consent calendar. Okay, Ms. Clark, why don't you conduct the roll? Did you have something, Vice Mayor?
Did you want, were we considering amending that, or?
It's up to you. If you want to make an amendment, now would be the time.
Okay, I would like to make an amendment to leave that wiggle room that the three of us have discussed.
Did the motion maker accept the amendment? I think that, you made the motion, Councilmember.
Yes. Okay.
The wiggle room is that if the, if the resolution gets changed substantially, the voting delegate will consult with either the city attorney and/or the city manager prior to voting.
That's how I interpret the motion to be. Does the maker accept?
Yes, I accept, but at this point, I'll probably abstain from the vote on that, because not voting on it still gives you the maximum flexibility. And I don't want to vote no, because I kind of like it, but I want to.
Okay.
So I accept the amendment change.
Councilmember Mullins, I believe you were the second on this one?
Yes.
And you accept the amendment?
I accepted, yes.
Okay, so amended. Any other discussion? All right, Ms. Clark, call the roll.
Councilmember Anthony?
No on one and five, abstain on four and eight, yes on two, three, six, seven, and nine.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes on all.
Councilmember Takahashi?
Yes on all.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Schultz.
No on eight for the reasons stated on the record, yes as to all others.
Thank you.
I believe all nine pass. Different totals, but they all pass. There we go. All right, now, we have one report to counsel this evening. After staff's presentation, the city council will proceed with in-person public comment only. Speakers will be allowed to speak on the item at the conclusion of the presentation as long as you have not spoken on the item during the first period of general public comment. Please be sure to submit your public comment card right now, as no additional public comment cards will be accepted once the public comment period begins following the staff presentation. The report to council tonight is regarding the Review of the Livable Communities Initiative, and I welcome Amanda Landry, Principal Planner from the Community Development Department, to present the report.
Good evening. May I have my presentation, please? Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Amanda Landry, Principal Planner with the CDD Planning. And Mayor Schultz requests staff is here tonight to provide an update on the city of Burbank's efforts that are complementary to the Livable Communities Initiative, or LCI, goals and strategies. The LCI is an advocacy group that has roots in the city of Los Angeles Housing Element, and it's currently composed of a variety of affiliated organizations based in Los Angeles and others with a statewide focus. Burbank City Planning Staff has had some initial contact with LCI members in the prior year, and most recently, a representative from the LCI presented to the Sustainable Burbank Commission. Planning Staff continues to offer opportunities to LCI members to learn more about the significant planning efforts the city council has facilitated that is also addressing many of the goals of the LCI. As we will continue, and we will continue to encourage the LCI to provide input as the city continues its long-range planning efforts, which include preparation of three ongoing specific plans and the implementation of the Housing Element Housing Plan Programs. Although the LCI uses different terminology, many of the key focus points of the LCI are aligned with the city of Burbank's existing and ongoing strategic land use planning. As an advocacy group, the LCI goals focus on a set of narrowly defined issues around which way they provide several implementation strategies. However, the approach to their goals are independent from consideration of broader community needs, and their approach to achieving their goals is different than the strategic community planning that Burbank does and has found to be successful. does and has found to be successful. In addition to many of the strategies proposed by the LCI, the city's multi-year planning and public engagement efforts take into consideration a full array of Burbank community needs, from land use planning, public safety, city infrastructure and utilities, parks and recreation, and the local economy. Burbank's community planning is coordinated within the overall city organizational and administrative structure, and this ensures that the strategic community planning is aligned and consistent with other city operations, so that the various efforts do not contradict each other. At the direction of the city council, all community planning efforts involve extensive outreach to ensure that the process fully takes into consideration and feasibly reflects the Burbank community vision, priorities, and needs. So the foundations of the strategic community planning in Burbank is the Burbank 2035 General Plan. From this, all of their strategic community planning efforts are derived, and this means that implementing documents such as the specific plans, zoning ordinance, and even issuing a building permits must be consistent with it to uphold the city's vision and core values. The City of Burbank has demonstrated it's fully invested in strategic land use planning, and this has been demonstrated through the adoption of the Burbank 2035 General Plan. The plan was adopted in 2013 by the city council, and it sets major policy framework for a horizon year of 2035. And it was a result of a multi-year effort, multi-year community-driven effort to ensure that it reflects Burbank's vision and provides opportunities for balanced development, environmental equity, housing variety, and quality neighborhoods as goals. The LCI has several goals centered around reducing carbon emissions, addressing climate and health concerns, and promoting certain building reforms as a strategy for achieving their goals. The City of Burbank is also invested in addressing climate change by reducing emissions and approaching zero-carbon developments, as demonstrated in the recently adopted Greenhouse Gas Reduction Plan in 2022. And this is part of the implementation of the Burbank 2035 Air Quality Element. However, Burbank takes a citywide approach to greenhouse gas reduction. So while it does include some green building strategies, the full menu of strategies expands much further, and citywide strategies in greenhouse gas reduction goals are tied to urban design, building requirements, energy sources and consumption, urban forestry, and transportation. The LCI has goals related to safer streets and pedestrian-friendly design. The City of Burbank is also invested in safer streets and pedestrian-friendly design, and this commitment is best reflected in the City's Complete Our Streets Plan, which was adopted by the city council in 2020, which sets forth a strategy for creating a better mobility network for all modes of transportation, with an emphasis on non-vehicular modes and pedestrian safety. The LCI has a core goal of addressing housing needs with a general strategy that is aimed at allowing more development intensity on smaller parcels along streets like Magnolia Boulevard, and instituting mandatory inclusionary affordable housing, anti-luxury provisions, and reducing or eliminating impact fees, and streamlining the development review process. The Burbank 2035 General Plans 2021 to 2029 Housing Element serves as a citywide roadmap to providing a full range of affordable and workforce housing opportunities. This long-term strategic plan for addressing housing needs takes into account many different state mandated issues, including affirmatively furthering fair housing and facilitating the development of up to 8,772 dwelling units. The Housing Element was crafted through a more than two-year public engagement process, was approved by the city council, and the Housing Element identifies opportunity sites that are suitable to accommodate the type of development needed to fulfill our state obligation and meet the city council's goal of building up to 12,000 units by 2035. These opportunity sites are the areas of the city that were deemed to be sufficient in size and under limited ownership to allow consolidation, and they are near future or existing transportation resources, employment centers, and existing multifamily developments and commercial businesses. While the moderately scaled development preferred by the LCI is permitted in other areas of the city, including our commercial corridors such as Magnolia Boulevard, many of these areas are directly abutting single-family neighborhoods, and the Burbank community has expressed strongly support for future development at the opportunity sites, which are being addressed through the ongoing specific plan process. As I mentioned, the LCI promotes redevelopment of main streets like San Fernando, Magnolia, and Burbank Boulevards as a solution to providing affordable housing. Based on the Burbank community's vision, as established in the Burbank 2035 General Plan, and the 2021 to 2029 Housing Element, and the recent specific plan efforts, the city is focusing planning efforts on facilitating the development of housing in communities with neighborhoods serving uses in the areas of the city that are closest to high-quality transit, employment centers, utility infrastructure, and other multifamily development. One of these efforts is the Downtown TOD Specific Plan, which takes advantage of the proximity to a metro link station and an existing commercial core. The Downtown TOD Specific Plan, along with the Golden State Specific Plan and the Media District Specific Plan, focus on mixed-use and transit-oriented development that emphasizes high-quality architectural design, and it's focused on and around the Housing Element opportunity sites. In addition, all three plans include strategies for increased densities that are economically feasible to develop, human-scaled pedestrian-oriented designs that emphasize non-vehicular modes of transportation, and tailored parking standards and management strategies that are appropriate for Burbank. The plans also seek opportunities for green space. And most importantly, they offer opportunities for streamlined development review, which is noted by the LCI as a point of interest. And then just briefly, the Golden State Specific Plan takes advantage of its proximity to transportation resources and underutilized commercial industrial parcels. And then the Media District Specific Plan is also situated in a major employment center close to transit opportunities and options, and with a major community employment base of the studios, offices, hospitals, and Main Street Commercial. And development in this area is intentised to occur around the existing multifamily communities in the core of the district away from single-family. So in addition to what I've just covered, the city has either recently completed or is actively working on other community planning efforts. And to kind of summarize the presentation, the city's community planning efforts are in strong alignment with many of the LCI goals and strategies, with a shared focus on addressing housing needs, sustainability, and public safety. The LCI recently provided the city with an executive summary, and planning staff is seeking to address the comments and suggestions in that document through ongoing community planning efforts. In this way, their suggestions can be taken in consideration with all other Burbank community feedback. And this ensures their proposal can be fully vetted by the Burbank community through the planning process. And then if anyone has any questions about the city's long-range community planning strategies, they're welcome to reach out to staff. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much for the presentation. You can grab a seat, but don't go too far. We're now going to get public comment on this matter. For the record, I'm in receipt of three public comment cards. So again, every commenter will have three minutes to address the council. There is no telephonic public comment as it relates to this item. And again, for the record, we're beginning public comments, and no additional cards will be accepted. First, we'll hear from Joe Pimienta, followed by David Donahue.
Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, and everyone in staff, and everybody else in the chamber. My name is Joe Pimienta, and I'm just going to keep this very brief. I am in full support of what the LCI's plan here is for a couple of, for just a couple of reasons. One, it's safer. Two, it will be cleaner. But three, it would also, when you have a communities that are more pedestrian-oriented and more oriented towards public transit, you create a community that is also more engaging with each other. And that is something that, and that is something that is just a win for everyone. It also makes it, it also makes it that you're using less gas, and with gas prices, that it's also something worth taking note of. But you also prioritize connectivity. And I do think that it's, that is something that it's, that the City of Burbank prides itself on just how tight of a community it can be. Well, emphasizing that with just how walkable your city can be is a big strength. More than a few times I have, you know, just more than a few times I have referred to as the Chandler Bike Way as a gem of this city. But the thing is that that cannot be the only feature of the city that is catering to, that is catering in addressing walkability and connectivity with the society. So we do need to bring more of this, and the proposition from the LCI signals a very strong focus for that. Because again, as someone who is an avid cyclist, or and a pedestrian, and who likes to get around public transit, this would be a great opportunity to make it clear that, you know, if you're on the west side and you would like to get to the east side, you don't have to risk your life going through those bridges, or let alone have to go under that bridge under Verdugo, or have to go under the, under the, under the overpass of Alameda. All these ways to get from the west side to the east side are pretty, you know, pretty dangerous, to say the least. So yeah, like providing, you know, providing solutions like this is a great, is a great way to actually continue developing something that will encourage the citizens to find alternative methods to transportation and to continue to be around the city that they love so much. Like I said, the more walkable it is, the more likely you are to be connecting with other people. And as we all like to say, Burbank is its residence. So with full appreciation for what the LCI is doing, thank you for your time, and very looking forward to the next steps. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have David Donahue, and then my last speaker card will be Elizabeth Bax.
Mayor Schultz, Councilmembers David Donahue. I've been working on housing and gentle densification for years by businesses in providing and building accessory dwelling units. I'm also a member of the Casita Coalition, and we follow California state policy, and I've been following the regulations and sort of what's been happening with your Complete Our Streets Plan, which is about a 222-page document that has midterm and long-term goals that are very highly transformative. What LCI, I believe, as I'm looking at it just for the first time yesterday and earlier today, proposes additional levels on top of the Complete Our Streets. The components of Complete, and what staff is already, and council's already adopted, I think is okay. Those things still need to be deliberated. But I want people that are watching this now or in the future to understand that any time you hear about lower-core carbon, which is good, but zero-carbon, that means cost. You hear about getting, you know, more bicycle mobility and restricting traffic, that means that the current traffic flows down Magnolia and Burbank Boulevard, which was just mentioned by somebody recently, are going to be impacted. So these are highly trafficked corridors. And these things are now on the plate that LCI is saying that we need to look at this and be able to change it, because it was specifically mentioned Burbank Boulevard and Magnolia, which is part of the Complete Our Streets Plan. If you go to the long-term sort of sections on Magnolia, you're looking right at Portos, where they want to take it down to one lane. That's long-term. Staff has said that may not happen, but I'm still saying that it's a part of the long-range plan. If you want to take Magnolia by Portos for about six or seven blocks and take it down to one lane, okay. I'm back over my Metro and my BRT and Olive Avenue and pin-packing the community, and then going around and putting in, and then everybody in Burbank is going to have parking permits and speed bumps and everything else. I want to offer this, because I want to really cut this off. I will put together a panel of four people, and we will debate this issue. I do not want to go through council. I do not want to go through staff. This is going to took too long already with this rent control stuff that you all did, and you had one meeting. Let's debate it. Let's have people that are focused on one side of the issue. I'll bring my four. They bring their four. Let's debate it. If people want to come, let's talk about it. It'll be respectful. It'll have content, and we'll data, and then we'll even have a moderator if we need to. And I would invite one of the councilmembers to do that. But let's not this tit and tat, back and forth. Let's come with our data. Let's come with the information which you have all just said a moment ago you really like. Give us the facts. I will promise we will bring the facts. But at the moment, right now, LC is not needed. Staff and state regulations already completed something that I think is going to be, you know, put in place or worked on. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our last in-person comment card this evening is Elizabeth Bax.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Bax, and I'm going to sound like I don't know anything about this after that. Great job, David. Because honestly, really, I'm confused at what was presented here, and I don't know enough. I realize that. But I'm hoping that there will be extensive, extensive outreach to the community to be able to help them understand this if you're going to go through with this. Because what is the vision of Burbank? Is there a statement? Because I don't know this, I don't know the statement. There probably is one, and I just don't know it. But why do people live in, why do people want to live in Burbank so much? What, why do they stay so long? You know, people come here because they want what Burbank has to offer now. They're not trying to get here to say, hey, let's demolish it and turn it into what we want. They like Burbank. And I think a lot of people that don't want to see all this growth happen the way that it's sounding like it's going to be, is because they do want to move into the future, but they don't want to forget our past. They want to leave what Burbank, the heart and soul of Burbank. When did we become a place that we would just want to completely bulldoze and start over? The council is here, the council is here to do what's best for all of Burbank, not just certain peoples of this community. And you're asking for high quality, but the LCI, the things I've read about it, saying they're going to change some of the way the building permits are going to be, and all these buildings that you're going to create, they're all going to be retrofit and ready for a big earthquake, right? That's going to be in there, too, I hope. If housing doesn't include parking, where are all these extra cars going to go? And where is the close transit? Is it already there? Because the one I see over on Empire is one bus going each direction to get people, and then they probably got to go on three or four others. And now there's the ADUs and, and the parcel splitting. So in my actual residential property area, I've got like eight to six, six to eight cars that are going to be parking on my street, if that goes, yes. I'm surrounded right now by four properties that have six cars apiece. Do they use their garage for two of them? No. So those cars are all on the street, and then they have to park on one side of the street when there's the, the street sweeping. But we could get rid of the street sweeping, and then we wouldn't have to worry about that. But no, what I'm hearing is that we're going to have permits and bumps, just like he said. And everybody's going to go in through our property. I just want you to consider the whole picture, not just part of it. What everybody wants for Burbank, not just one or two people. Thank you very much. I really appreciate everything you're doing to make Burbank a better, better place. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. That was the last speaker card that I have, so that will conclude public comment on this item. Before I open it up to council, questions? Does staff have any brief response to the public comment we've just heard? I'm seeing a no indication?
We do not.
Okay, all right. Colleagues, if it's all right, I want to be brief, but because I'd requested the item, I just wanted to start with a couple of questions to set the table, and then I'll gladly turn it over to all of you. Mr. Ramirez, could I borrow you? So I'll give you the wind-up of the question, Mr. Ramirez. So when Livable Communities Initiative Burbank approached me, and I believe they approached the entire council a number of months back, they had, well, I saw the email, so I know at least it was in your inbox. I know there was an executive summary with a pretty substantial list of recommendations. Some might be compatible with our existing plans, maybe some aren't. But for whatever the reason, that didn't make its way to staff. Now, I know I'm putting you a little bit on the spot, because I gave you my copy yesterday. But my question is a big-picture one for folks like Ms. Bax, who just want to understand better what it is that we're talking about. Could you just give us a high-level overview of that summary and the concept of LCI? How does it, how did, from your initial review, how does it integrate with what we may already have, and what is it addressed that we haven't addressed before?
Well, I'm going to give you a disclaimer. I would probably rely on some of the staff to go into the specifics of the 14 strategies that they talked about. But what is kind of a general understanding, and noted in the staff report on pages three and four, are that LCI's focus is looking at mixed-use, transit-oriented development projects, green building, as well as opportunities for open space preservation, as well as infrastructure investment to facilitate both the development of housing at the missing-middle scale that they're proposing, three-to-five-story buildings, as well as looking at ways to focus on the use of public transportation as an alternative. As the staff report noted, as far as LCI's broader concepts, and Ms. Landry noted that there's a lot of alignment there between what we're doing currently with the specific plans and their efforts. One thing I would request is that, since we just received the executive summary, we really need to look at... at it and get an opportunity for subject matter experts, both on the staff as well as our consultant teams that's done specific plans, you know, multiple specific plans, to kind of look and see where there is an opportunity for synergy in looking at those concepts. There is some discussion within the executive summary talking about the use of floor-area ratios to look at residential development. As you may be aware, our general plan has a policy that looks at dwelling units and non-residential FAR. So the approach would be a significant change in city policy and could have some implications to how we review development now and in the future. So those are things that we would want to be sure to vet and to one of the speakers' concerns regarding public vetting of these concepts. One thing we would encourage is LCI to continue to participate in the process. There's no decision being made tonight, so I just want to clarify that as well. But we encourage LCI and other members of the public to continue to participate in the ongoing planning efforts that Mrs. Landry, who's working on the media district, and the other planners that are working on Golden State, as well as the one for downtown, to look at how our development standards that are going to be proposed and presented to the community for review align with the initiatives that LCI is proposing. I think there's a lot of opportunity to find alignment and synergy. There may be some things that aren't exactly the way that we've been looking at them because we've gotten multiple years of feedback from the community, and there's a concern that we want to protect our neighborhoods while facilitating housing that meets our regulatory requirements from the state. But one thing I will say, the intent of the long-range planning efforts locally are to ensure that all these different components that the LCI executive summary notes, that if they can be considered, that they be looked at on how they are in line with the Burbank way of looking at long-range planning and development. So hopefully that answers the question. I will say I'm light on specifics because I really do want to caution ourselves in the process of review to being able to look at those and vet those on a project-by-project basis with each specific plan, and see how they may make sense geographically in one location versus another. LCI focuses in some areas on corridors. We're looking at larger geographic areas that are inclusive of corridors, but then also looking at opportunity sites within the housing element that include things like the mall, Kmart, the old Fri, excuse me, the old Fries location, as well as other sites that are in the housing element. So I just want to be able to let the community know, let the council know that we encourage and we want to see discussion regarding innovation. And when we can have synergy and ensure compatibility of neighborhoods with new development, we embrace that. But we want to make sure we're doing it in such a format that we allow the public to, one, vet the input from LCI and others, and make sure that it is consistent with what they envision the community in the future while accommodating state mandates.
Wonderful.
And if I could just add on, I just want to reiterate, like, staff has not, we just received that, that document a day ago. So, so we're just not prepared to, we have not reviewed it, and we're not prepared to really get involved in that tonight. So, so I just want to make sure that that's clear if there's any questions related to that.
Understood. And Mr. Hess, I'll say this one time for the sake of the record, and then I'll, I'll leave it be. I understand and respect that that's staff's position, but I saw the email come in. I know it was given to staff. When I played back the tape, I listened to my motion, and I felt that I was very clear in my motion, that I wanted a more expansive conversation of these recommendations. It's very unfortunate that that didn't happen here. I'm a little disappointed. With that said, I also understand that this is very much like the concept of Vision Zero. I will only reference it to talk about. The procedural question that I have for you, Mr. Hess, I have the question for you. The question is, I understand the staff recommendation is note and file, and that is certainly an option. We could simply take no action. But if this is something the council did want to explore as part of a next-step report, that is certain direction we'd have to give tonight, because if we don't give that direction, staff would have no mandate to even look any further at it, correct?
So can I give you some broader context for, for these proposals? So staff, I heard Mr. Ramirez say that many of these concepts are consistent with the general plan, and Ms. Landry kind of went through those, and you referenced the Complete Our Streets. And the city has many projects actually currently underway to extend. The South Channel Bike Way, for instance, in addition to the Chandler Bike Way, runs from the MetroLink station almost all the way down, well, to Victory near the 31 Flavors, one of the few two-story 31 Flavors with a drive-through also. But let me get, give a little bit of framework. So right now, the city's in the process of executing on $6 million of grant-funded planning to provide or realize development opportunity sites near transit. So the two MetroLink stations and the airport where High Speed Rail's going to come, that's the Golden State area. The town, downtown Burbank TOD, Transit-Oriented Development, all centered around the MetroLink station and the BRT and our presently highest ridership corridors, Olive and First Street. So that's, I think, in line with the transit principles. In terms of some of these development standards, we've seen, as the council has seen, you've seen, I think, eight SB 35 projects, which are streamlined development proposals under a program created by the legislature. And so the Goal 14 is streamlined development approvals, and you're living that already. There is a goal to have parking-free development, and of course, we have AB 2097, which if you're within half-mile of transit and meet other parking requirements, a development proposal, we cannot enforce or incorporate parking. So I think between the state preemption and streamlined development approvals, I think we're, we're really working on that. And council last year adopted objective development standards for all of those streamlined development proposals, SB 35, and then AB 2011 and SB 6. So I think we're getting there, but right now, under the framework of the general plan and under the direction of the council with Complete Our Streets, we're in the middle of trying to implement our housing element with the specific plans. So these proposals would follow a very similar process. They're proposed regulatory changes, and we already have that process in place. I believe staff is expected to bring those ordinances to council next summer-ish, 2025. We're actually currently doing all of the infrastructure planning for each of the specific plans, so that potentially 20,000 units of new housing have an infrastructure plan that matches. And so all of that would be required of this proposal as well. So even if council gave direction tonight, bring back a second-step report, it would still follow the same regulatory process. All due respect to Mr. Donahue, I don't see him in the room.
I believe he left.
But this council can't just resolve something with a debate. The, the, the land-use planning process requires a very deliberate process involving planning commission, council, multiple hearings, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Prescott, I believe you have something to add.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Patrick Prescott, Community Development Director. As Mr. McDougal mentioned, we're working on essentially a citywide general plan update. We're doing four, four significant specific plans. So give us a chance to show you what's in there. I assure you, as has been stated, that much, many of the things you see through the Livable Cities Initiative was generated through the city of Los Angeles, housing element, correct? You, you will see reflected in the specific plans. We've brought some sort of previews of those things to you over time. I am concerned that if you direct us to do a second-step report on Livable Communities Initiative, the people working on the four significant specific plans will pause that work and, and work on a report on Livable Cities Initiative. I'm, that's just, I'm a little concerned about.
Who makes that decision?
Which, sorry.
The prioritization of different items, like a specific plan.
So it's complicated. So it would be the council, but we have contractual obligations with Metro, High Speed Rail, and SCAG. So I would advise that the schedule must meet our current contractual obligations.
Of course.
Which are tied into the specific plans.
Totally. That, that, that's what I figured, is I understand. I guess I see the risk, but unless the motion directed that it take advance priority, priority over everything else, I would imagine it would be gotten to in the ordinary course of business.
It, yes, it would depend on what the, what the council direction is. If the council direction is flesh out a little bit more the executive summary over time or at some given point in the future, I'm not comfortable with, well, I guess I would just accept it, right? Council policy is my work direction. But just integrating LCI initiatives into the specific plans without vetting that with the community who's been participating in this process, by the way, for several years. I would encourage the people advocating for the LCI stuff to remain in contact with the Planning Division. Attend the meetings, submit public comment, et cetera, because that's how you get that information in there.
Okay. I appreciate, I'm almost done, colleagues. I'll hand it over. Mr. Prescott, Ms. McDougal, I appreciate your input. Mr. Hess, back to you, one question. The question is, if we do note and file, I mean, let me just be very blunt. If we note and file, there's no guarantee it moves further, further at all. If this is something the council even wants to have a distant, two years from now, conversation about, that is direction we need to give tonight, correct?
Yes, absolutely. And the more specific, the better for us.
Okay. I appreciate that. I'm done, colleagues. Vice Mayor, and then we'll go to Councilmember Anthony.
Yeah, I just have one very simple question, because to the mayor's point, I, and I already shared this with staff, so no surprise. My expectation of what was coming tonight was the executive summary with staff comments on it, with thoughts on, quite frankly, like, we're already doing this. This is a good idea, et cetera, et cetera, much to what Mr. McDougal just started doing down the line. That is what I expected to see tonight. I totally agree with folks in the audience, with our staff, with everyone up here, that we can't really make a decision on this, or we can't really move this forward if we don't know what we're talking about, or if we don't have an analysis. And I thought we would have an analysis at one point, right? Because that's what the mayor had asked for. I get that something was lost in translation, and definitely not Ms. Landry's issue at all. But I get that something was lost in, in translation. So my ask is, and I'm finding it hard to see how hard it would be to bring back, at least in the preliminary time, an analysis of those 14 points. Like I said during the pre-meeting, I would love to hear, we are doing this already. We are not doing this because of X, Y, and Z. We like this. We don't like this. We'd love your input. And that's at least one of the first things that I would personally like to see. And I know that adoption of these things may take time, if that's the council's pleasure. I also know that if the goal, and, and what staff is suggesting, is that a lot of this is already incorporated in our specific plans or is going to be, I appreciate that. I would love you pointing it out when those specific plans come back. But I still would like to see what the mayor directed, gosh, how many months ago, just to have that executive summary come back with staff's thoughts on each one of those items. We value your input, and I'd love to know what you all think about the items.
Mr. Prescott, welcome back.
In February, you requested a first-step report on the initiatives from Livable Communities Initiative Burbank, including staff's initial response. And I believe that your professional planning staff has been responsive to that request this evening. If you give us direction to do a second-step report, we will be happy to follow up with you on that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Prescott. And I'll just say one thing. I don't say this to argue with staff. Perhaps this is a game of telephone. When I said I'd like a response to the initiatives of the LCI, as I say that out loud, I think it's very clear I'm talking about the 14 points that were submitted by email that I know many of you received, because I was on the email. But with that said, there's no point in crying over spilled milk, right? We are where we are. And I think that, to your point, Mr. Hess, if that's something the council has any appetite for, we can give direction tonight. And to some of my colleagues that I know may not like that, they can certainly direct a note and file, and we can take no further action. But I, for one, I'm very interested in learning more. Councilmember Anthony.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to ask something. Mr. Prescott, you mentioned we have four specific plans coming. Correct me if I'm wrong. The Golden State specific plan, the downtown traffic-oriented development plan, the media district, and then?
Rancho.
Rancho? Okay. Okay, great. And then at some point, those four would affect the general plan as a whole. If it's okay, I'd like to bring up a subject matter expert on the Livable Communities Initiative. I believe Mr. Ingram is still in the audience. If I could ask him just a couple of questions on what he knows about LCI. If that's all right. Mr. Ingram, do you have just a quick minute?
For the record, the chair will entertain it. It is the council's pleasure to ask information of anyone that the council may find of value. Mr. Ingram?
Hi.
Thank you for being here.
Of course.
Councilmember, please confine it as best you can to questions and answers.
Thank you. Just real quick, what is your relationship with LCI, just for people here?
I am an unpaid community volunteer. I started my housing advocacy efforts kind of immediately post-pandemic, when frankly, a bunch of my friend group had to move out of Burbank because it was no longer affordable for them to stay here.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. In your participation with LCI, just general overview, does LCI, do they give, like, scorecards on cities that pass all 14 initiatives? Do they create, like, a percentage or a certification?
No, these 14 points were written for Burbank specifically, and someone mentioned that maybe this executive summary originated in the Los Angeles housing element. Those are a completely separate set of recommendations. So it's just a small group of people that's very specifically targeting different municipalities' housing element. So these were very specific. There's, there's no, like, voting system or anything, or...
Okay. The reason I ask, for comparison, say, a LEED certification, which is an environmental qualifier for specific developments. You have to meet certain point thresholds to meet silver, gold, or platinum certification. For the Livable Communities Initiative, it is more, from my understanding, a, a general overview of what a livable communities in, in this organization's mind would look like. So for us to implement, say, 12 or 13 of the 14 points is still a, sort of, a positive benefit in your organization's mind, not necessarily putting in every single detail, all 14. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely. I think that we would have a certain few policies that we would consider more urgent than others. But that's kind of more, we'd consider that a bigger win, but not like a, there's not like an acceptability threshold or anything like that.
Okay. And then my last question for you. You said you're a volunteer with the organization. Does your group, do you have the bandwidth to be able to participate in the upcoming specific plan updates, Media District, Downtown Transit, Golden State, and Rancho? Do you think you'd be able to show up, talk with staff, give input?
Yeah, as much as we can. I know on the, the next one, I think, is on the 15th. I'm out of town. I travel a lot for work. I do events production across the country. So I know I'm not available for that one, but I know some of the council has met a couple of our other members. Ed Mendoza works with us, and he's our policy director. And he'd be able to speak very specifically with building code and zoning issues and such. He's, he's really the expert in the nitty-gritty.
Okay. Well, thank you. I would only recommend, lastly, per the discussion we had earlier, please, please attend these upcoming specific plan updates. Staff is taking all the input, and all 14 of these points can be submitted directly to them on a case-by-case basis or en masse.
Yeah. Again, I try to go to as many as I can. Being in events, I'm working on weekends a lot.
I understand.
So it's tough. But yeah, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for coming down tonight.
Mr. Ingram, sorry. Before you leave, I just want to see if any of my colleagues have questions.
I do. I actually, and, and thank you, Councilmember Anthony, for asking that question. My, my concern and question together, staff has been working on all these specific plans for years. The media-specific plan, they've been ongoing meetings, nonstop, and a lot of us have attended and heard them. My question is, why haven't, I know you said you're busy and you've been traveling, so there's a good reason. Why haven't other members of the organization have been involved in the specific plan, given input to staff, and also shared or requested a meeting to sit down with them and ask them what will be included in the specific plan?
Well, we have presented to planning, we've presented to various commissions.
Well, we have presented to planning, we've presented to various commissions in the city, so we've, we have done, um, outreach like that. We've set up, um, booths at the farmer's market. Um, we're going to be at the Jackalope Art Fair. Um, so we're doing broad community engagement. We host online Zooms that we, um, send out notifications with our email list, post on social media, um, stuff like that. Um, and as far as showing up, again, like, we're a relatively new, small organization. Our volunteers aren't all specifically in Burbank and, um, we're frankly, I think that we're just a really ambitious group. Um, because of that, um, we did get included into the Los Angeles housing element. We passed five votes through LA City Council, which I think is a testament to how hard we actually work. Um, the city of San Diego is actually, uh, they actually formed an official commission, um, to study our specific recommendations for San Diego. Um, we're often presenting to groups, um, like, uh, affordable housing, uh, affordable housing, uh, look at the list that was on our, in our packet.
I'm also looking at what staff have provided, um, with California YMB, uh, safe streets, um, yeah, sustainable alliance. And it's great that you're being out in the community and you've been, um, maybe spreading the word and letting people know who you are as an organization, but that doesn't bring these concerns and issues directly to staff and participate and have input.
Mr. Ingram, I'm sorry to interrupt. Did you meet with staff at any point to go over the livable communities initiative?
Yes.
Yep. Who, which staff did you meet with?
Uh, we met with, uh, Pat, Mr. Prescott, sorry. Yeah.
Sure. Let me, let me first start with, do you have any other question for Mr. Ingram?
I do, actually, I do.
Why don't we finish that and then we'll get Patrick up here?
Okay, I do. Thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm sure, Mr. Prescott, that my point is, we have been sitting here on council for the last two years and the couple of the council members, the mayor and Councilmember Anthony have been here for four years. Lot of specific plan. We adopted this, uh, safe streets. We've been adopting the housing element prior council. We've been talking, uh, for years about our implementation of our specific plans. And in my surprise, tonight, I, I, I saw the report. I know the mayor asked for it back in February, but it was more of, let's see who are these organizations? Let's see what they stand for. This is how I understood it when the, when the mayor had asked for the report. And, and I do apologize if you did send the email. Um, I went back and I searched. I even asked, asked Councilmember Takahashi this afternoon if she has any emails that she saw that has livable communities initiative on it, or anything that I can find in my inbox. And let me tell you, my inbox is extremely big and there is a lot of emails. And I do apologize if I did not see it or miss it. I will ask for the date and, and the mayor said that he saw the email coming. This is the first today, when the city manager sent us this report, was the first time I have seen this document. And again, could be my fault, but I do want to see if you sent the email and I want to see if my name was on it and who did you talk to staff? Because as a council member responsible for overseeing this community and making policy decisions, and I'm, I'm not being critical of you, please try to understand. I am sitting here going, what is going on based on the mayor's input, the vice mayor's input? It seemed like I was missing something in this whole equation to what we were asking for. When I read this briefly, because it came to me kind of early this afternoon, I see that a lot of things that you talk about here, we have been working with for years and we've, as a matter of fact, implemented. A lot of these steps that you're talking about is, you know, moving forward with housing, affordable housing, moving with open space, safe streets, all these things we have been talking about. So we're not maybe way off from what you, the organization is presenting. What I want to offer is, um, this is something that I think it's extremely important that your organization sit down with staff, not just to participate in the public input, to participate and let them hear what you're bringing to the table. Um, but for me to sit tonight and, and be expected to do a second step report, bring, let's change everything, overhaul everything that we've been working on for years, it's unfair for everyone who has participated this far in the process. And delaying our specific plan is extremely concerning and important because there's a lot of developers, a lot of people who are willing to come to the city and, and have opportunity size to give us those housing that we need for, uh, RIMA numbers. Um, that is really unfair that we're having to do a midway shift and saying, oh, no, we need to get more information. Staff, you need to stop. And I'm not saying that this is what we're saying, Mr. Mayor, but I'm making a point to where I stand from. Um, there is a lot of issues and concern that I see that needs to be flushed out and discussed. And I do appreciate you being here tonight and I will stop for now until the rest of the council make points at what they want to say.
Thank you, Councilmember. Um, Mr. Ingram, there was a lot that was said there. I think there were several questions baked in there. So if you have anything specific that you'd like to respond to, you can, you're not obligated to. And then I'm going to see if any of my other colleagues have a question for you, sir.
Sure. I mean, you know, the Burbank 2035 plan originated in 2013, was it exactly? In 11 years, we haven't seen a single building gone up that really conforms to the standards that the LCI sets. And so I think that, you know, staff has commented a lot that our efforts are very complimentary. Um, but some of the solutions are very specific and very targeted. We're talking about very specific things. In the 2035 plan, a lot of the times you read about what the goals are, but not literally what, you know, um, for example, you know, unlimited, uh, housing density on lots under 7,500 square feet, like, uh, floor area, maximizing floor area ratios and what those ratios actually are, at which points in the housing element, uh, the language of the building code needs to change. And that's exactly what we're providing. I would argue that it's more of a complimentary effort. I don't think that it's, um, as you said, like a, a mid-range shift in strategy. I think frankly, that any strategy should constantly be, uh, reevaluated, especially with something as complex as housing and community development. Um, I don't think that anybody now would, uh, frankly disagree that the housing market, um, in Burbank and Los Angeles, California as a whole, the, the country is the same as it was even four years ago. It's a vastly different space. I mean, I don't want to digress too much, but we're talking about things like, um, corporate ownership of single family homes, um, taking place of, uh, mortgage backed securities, which caused a whole crisis in 2008. We don't know what the repercussions of that is. And I'm just using that as an example to say like, yes, this might be a hiccup in the established plan, but it's okay to reevaluate things even in the midst of doing them. Um, and again, I don't really consider this a deviation. I think this is a complimentary effort. Um, one of the things that got me interested, uh, with the LCI group originally is, um, and how it relates to Burbank is I hear a lot of the time Burbank has this idea that it's a, it's like the small town suburb of, of LA, right? And I grew up in a small town. I grew up in a town of 10,000 people in Vermont, and our downtown is more dense than Burbank. So the things that we're talking about is not, uh, antithetical to what, and someone else mentioned it, and I forget who, and I apologize, but they, they asked about like, what is the vision of Burbank? Like, what is the long range vision? And if we're talking about like, oh, a cozy community neighborhood, and I realize this is not specific and technical, this is more of an ethereal thing, but you're not talking about the front street developments. That's not what you're talking about. That's not what a close knit community feels like. And I think that's kind of what, um, endeared me to the LCI is you can create the density, you can create, um, uh, abundance of varying housing solutions while maintaining this idea of, you know, small town feel, more suburban, little quieter, little slower, slowed down, things like that.
Mr. Ingram, I appreciate the answer. I'm going to give, uh, the vice mayor a chance to ask you questions. And Mr. Prescott, I haven't forgotten you. You're going to be next in the queue. Sorry, Mr. Prescott, you don't have a, okay, got it. So, okay, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Hi, Mr. Ingram.
Hi.
Couple of questions, just for clarity, for my own clarity. Did you send the executive summary to all of us on council?
I'm pretty sure, but don't quote me on that. And I apologize if I didn't get it to everybody. I know I've, at various times, I've, uh, emailed all of you individually and/or as a group, so, um, I'd have to go back and, and check my, uh, my, my sent.
Okay, that was my first question. And if you have not, if you go back and checking your emails and you have not for some reason, I suggest you make sure that it gets in the hands of every single person on this dais. Um, I know I for one received it and your invitation to meet and have any questions answered. And I had a chance to discuss some things. I didn't know a lot about point access block, um, multi-housing units at the time. And now I feel a little bit much, well, a little, much more well-versed in this and, and other certain points in the executive summary. So again, to my colleagues, I would also invite you all to meet with Mr. Ingram and, um, Ed Mendoza, who is very informative and, and his planning experience. My next question for you is, what was your goal in creating this to, was this ever for the specific plans or was it a broader goal for Burbank and planning and how we think of it as a whole?
I guess it's more of a broader goal. Yeah. Um, I think there's inherent pros and cons to, I, like, either approach, approaching like a building code citywide or doing specific like zone plans. Um, I think that, um, in having zone specific feels more like, uh, exclusionary zoning, um, which contributes, uh, a lot to the, um, climate crisis through increase in VMT. Um, and so I think that it makes a lot of sense to me, uh, to build around, uh, current infrastructure. And I'm not just talking necessarily where, um, power, water, sewage lines are run, but also to essential, uh, businesses and necessities that people have, grocery stores, pharmacies, things like that. Um, and we have that. We have the capacity to increase density in those areas, um, just in that kind of gentle way. It needs to be approached with a light touch. Um, and I think the, um, the corollary to that is also that this is the housing that's, you don't see a lot of. We see a lot of large corporate developments. We've got the Talaria Front Street, First Ave Village, the Pickwick Project that's going in. That was its own whole total other thing. Um, you see single family homes, you see ADUs. I'm not opposed to any housing really, but they call it missing middle for a reason. And it seems to be the area that is not, uh, resulting in units being built.
And that was essentially the explanation I received upon meeting with you all. So that's why I asked that because I do feel like we take, took a deviation towards specific plans. And I don't know that that was originally the goal, although it may be an opportunity to reconsider the goals and, and where, you know, where you place efforts and discussions. But just a thought.
All right.
Those are my questions.
Okay. Uh, I know there'll be more questions, but as they relate to Mr. Ingram, are there any other questions for him from the council? Yes, sir. Uh, I know you didn't come down here and plan on speaking to us this long, but.
Not at all.
I, I would just want to thank you for, uh, taking the opportunity to stepping up and advocating for your group. Um, thank you for your time.
Yeah, uh, if I, if I may, we appreciate, uh, difficult feedback. Uh, we appreciate, um, hard questions. So I thank you all for the opportunity to speak.
And I believe Councilmember Mullen says a comment or question.
Yeah, one last thing. Of course, thank you for being down here and joining us this evening. I do want to ask you a direct question. Have you ever reached out to me or Mr. Mendoza to meet with me and discuss this?
Yes, you've met with, with Ed Mendoza.
And, and regarding this, this executive summary?
Uh, he might have met with you before that, actually. I'm not going to speak on that specific, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else?
Sorry, could I just say one thing? Uh, and I, and I don't want to come across as confrontational, but I, I didn't, uh, I don't think that it's unfair, um, for other people to join a conversation in public discourse just because you're halfway through a process. I don't think that's unfair to necessarily the, the decisions that you've made. I, whether or not, uh, any objections I have or anybody has, have any bearing on changing the outcome, I, I just don't fundamentally think that's an unfair thing to do.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Ingram. You're welcome to continue watching in the audience.
Thank you.
Um, are there any other questions for staff? Let's just confine ourselves to questions and then we'll have robust discussion. Um, Councilmember Takahashi, did you have anything?
Yeah, I have a few questions for staff, actually. Thank you. Um, so, uh, these are just more general questions about some of the concepts that were brought up in LCI. One of the things that was brought up in both the public comments and also in some of the LCI documentation is the concept of gentle density. So has, is gentle density anywhere in our specific plans, our general plan, our housing plan? And if so, can you give just commentary on where that shows up for us right now?
Yes. Hi, good evening. Amanda Landry, Principal Planner, CDD Planning. Um, so gentle density is, is definitely an issue that is addressed in all of our specific plan efforts. We are accommodating a variety of housing. Um, it doesn't always have to be high density housing. Our development standards are applicable to buildings from one story to five to seven stories. So it definitely can be accommodated. In addition, the city has a set of, um, mixed use development standards that would apply to the corridor. So if people today were interested in developing along any of the corridors to walk in, um, use our development standards and build, um, housing very similar to what the LCI has advocated for. So our, our code does allow that. Um, and actually, we, we put, we took special effort and measures to put that in place to accommodate that kind of development. So yes, and then our housing element has a program for us to additionally look at more ways to accommodate some missing middle housing, which is, um, similar to the concept of the gentle density that the LCI has mentioned. So we do have programs in place to address a lot of the things that, um, Mr. Ingram has discussed. A lot of those things are currently going on with our specific plans. And, um, I had the opportunity to speak to Mr. Ingram before the meeting. Uh, you know, I mentioned to him I'd be happy to sit down with him and walk him through all of our, our processes in detail and see where there's opportunity for us to be in alignment. Um, I really try to understand the heart of the concerns and issues and all the specific plan managers do that so that we can address it in our plans in a way that is consistent with the community vision. And we don't want to elevate any one particular community member above the others. So we do this with everyone. Um, so I'd be happy to do that with Mr. Ingram and my colleagues are happy to do that for the other plans too. Um, so.
Great. I do have a comment on that, but I'll bring it up later.
I, I'd like to just give you an example of, because gentle density, it's not a term I'm familiar with. Keep in mind that over the 35 years that I've been a planner and a land use attorney, we've replaced the terms over and over again. There was neo-traditionalist. I mean, there's, we, we, we throw terms out, we put new terms in. But at the corner of Reese and Verdugo, there's a 13 unit residential project with rooftop patios and urgent care on the ground floor. It's by the old CVS, very close to boroughs. So that was originally built with a conditional use permit and, uh, I believe the applicant had their project kind of replanned by the city council, uh, lost a unit or two. And there's opportunities for streamlining. But in Burbank, I would call 13 units on a corner lot with mixed use, gentle density. Some of the numbers that I see in this outline, like going four to six stories, that's a little closer to the 2814 project that's next to Robert Gross Park. It's actually topped out. That's actually, I think, seven stories. So we're kind of looking between, say, Reese and Verdugo, um, that project, uh, and then a lot of your SB 35s are kind of, they're smaller density. They're in the 40, um, unit projects. And then in terms of inclusionary zoning versus exclusionary zoning, so the SB 35 projects that you've seen on 910 South Mariposa, which the one that council actually approved was 20, for sale units. Now that one's in litigation, but that project was an M1 site, but it was allowed because the general plan allows residential at a higher density. The same thing with Pickwick, that was a Rancho commercial site, but the general plan allowed residential. So that's actually inclusionary. We don't use that term, but the general plan provides an. an opportunity to do housing, and SB 35 realigned. SB 35 took out the conflict between zoning and the general plan. So, the general plan, which was the most recent residential, because we didn't comprehensively revise zoning yet, it provides that opportunity, and then staff brought to council objective standards, so when people come in for those residential projects in non-residential zones, there's an off-the-shelf standard now for the residential and the non-residential zones. So, that's happening, and I think it is a good ask to say, how do these match? Another law that our developers are using, our property owners are using to kind of bridge the gap, to make some of these goals happen, is the state density bonus law. There's language in here to relieve some standards to allow higher-density residential, and there's this structure called incentives and concessions and reductions and waivers in the state law. And it compels us to relieve open space requirement, parking requirement, setback requirements for the purpose of allowing more housing, and there's language in here about mandatory inclusion. Well, it's for the purpose of making the housing more affordable and providing the inclusionary. So, I think there's a lot of room to show where some of these things are happening in addition to some of the other things. But to the question you put to Ms. Landry, that Reese and Verdugo, I think is a really good example. It's newer, but I'm older, so when I say newer, it could be old to some people in this room, but I want to say 2012, 2013. And it took them a couple of attempts, so there's room for streamlining, but that was 12 or 13, they may have asked for 13 and got 12, but it's got mixed use. That's neighborhood serving, because it's urgent care. So, anyway, just to bridge that.
Yeah, thank you for that example of that one in the corner. I'd forgotten, what's interesting is I had forgotten that that building is residential, and I've been to that urgent care, that's my urgent care, and so I forgot that there is housing above there. And now that you pointed out, I'm like, oh, yeah, there is housing up there. And I think that's part of kind of the concept of gentle density, is that it creates density without much, like, you don't really notice that there's more density in there. So, I think that is a great example that you just gave, and I think I would be curious to see, you know, maybe what other examples we had so far, and if the updates that we've done on our own have encouraged more of that kind of development. There's also something in the LCI that I, one of the first things I had heard from LCI that I keep seeing consistently brought up is the single staircase, the shift to single staircase requirement. My understanding is it's somewhat complicated because there's local and there's state laws, and so I'm just curious, though, just briefly, kind of where we're at with that locally, with the single staircase law, and if that's something that is even, like, even fathomable at this point that we can move forward with thinking about it.
Yes, the issue of the single staircases is one of the examples LCI brought up of a state initiative that they participated in, and they did get a signature on that, and the state has committed to asking the state fire marshal to look into that request to see if it's safe and something that could be included in a future building code update. And that would be a statewide building code.
Okay, but not local?
No, of all local governments adopt the state building code.
Right, okay. And then the last question I have for you, and I do have a number of comments, but I'll save them for the next part.
Councilmember, sorry, could I ask you a quick question? When you talk about the single staircase, could you just explain what was in here for people at home?
Actually, I'm probably not the right person to explain it. Could you just briefly explain what that is from a professional perspective and not from a layperson's perspective over here?
Okay, so, in a nutshell, the building code requires that certain development have two means of egress for safety, and like in case there's a fire and one exit's blocked, you can go to another exit and safely get out of the building. The proposal from the LCI is to reduce that down to one and have alternative means to help with fire prevention.
Right, yeah. I think one of the examples I gave is like on the East Coast, there's one staircase inside and then this fire escape on the outside, yeah. The last question I have is, right now, how feasible is it to, in our community, to remodel a small commercial building like the one on the corner in Verdugo? How feasible is it to do that kind of development now in our city? I know it's hard, it's kind of a loosey-goosey term, feasible, but let's say somebody in the community wanted to do it, is that something that, you know, what would be their entry point to it? How doable is it at this point?
Well, it's a very nuanced question and answer. Depending on where the building is, what kind of building it is, and what the proposed reuse of that building is, there's a lot of different answers. In certain circumstances, it could be possible, you know, depending on the exact conditions of the property. And staff does a lot of work looking at the individual characteristics of the properties and has discussions with the owners and developers to make sure that what they want to do is actually possible, and if it's not possible, we give recommendations on how they could tweak it so that it is possible.
Okay.
So, it's not a simple yes or no, sorry.
My understanding or my sentiment from this, many of these goals, is that the purpose is to make that more feasible. And so, I'm just curious where we're at now to send and compare, like, how more feasible it would be to add these things, yeah?
Yeah, so for the specific plan areas, which is where we're doing a lot of policy work, and we're trying to incorporate policies to allow streamlined development, so that projects that are consistent with the development standards of the specific plans go straight into plan check, and then they can get approved right away. So, that's one of the major goals of the specific plans.
And that was one of the goals on this list, too? Yeah, okay, yeah, I think it was eight or nine. Great, okay. Madam Vice Mayor, I do have comments, but I'll save it for our comment discussion. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions, Mr. Mayor?
Are we having fun yet?
I do have a question, and I'm not sure, maybe you have the information, maybe you don't, because I read in the executive summary or, and also in your presentation, the focus is really on Magnolia and Burbank Boulevard, and so, the question that I have in mind is, Burbank in size compared to the city of LA? Is there, on the lot size, that is, like, if, on Magnolia, for example, the width and the depth of the size of the lot, how is it compared to a city of like Los Angeles in their parcel or their site locations?
Well, I can't speak to the entirety of Los Angeles, but I can generally characterize Burbank's corridors. A lot of the properties along with corridors are relatively narrow and shallow, so they are not, you know, ideal places for large development. This zoning code does allow for moderate, kind of what we've been talking about is the gentle density as termed by the LCI. So, that is already allowed, and we can accommodate it. The city does have some height restrictions, and it might require a conditional use permit. So, that could be something that we look at as part of one of our housing program implementation items to kind of see how we can help facilitate that missing middle housing. That's a separate effort that we already have on our forecast to do, so that is coming, that effort is coming. And as part of the specific plans that do have the corridors, we are trying to include incentivization for consolidating some of those lots. The development standards would facilitate exactly the type of moderate gentle density that is talked about. So, we are trying to work with what we have, but by and large, on the other parts of the corridors outside of the specific plans, the lots are very narrow and shallow and really like what has been developed on them, no one has really come to us with any interest in redeveloping it. It just doesn't make financial sense for those particular developers.
Unless you would have to consolidate multiple locations or commercial locations to make it into a project like the one on Reese and Verdugo, because obviously, that's a bigger project compared to something on Magnolia. The other question I have in regards to the height, and I believe in the executive summary, I read somewhere, and I could be wrong, but it says the height will be 60 feet versus our height is around 40 feet for the city.
So, we have standard heights that are by right. You can exceed them with conditional use permits in certain circumstances in some zones. 60 feet next to R1 has been a long, the city has long held standards to reduce the height and kind of buffer development, R1 from development on the corridors. So, we have regulations that kind of step that back to allow for privacy and, you know, other standard comfort things.
So, one more question, Mr. Mayor. So, in the case of the livable communities where the executive summary says that you can actually have a building with 60 feet in height where it's adjacent to a residential neighborhood, you know, there is a small house right adjacent, right behind a commercial lot on Magnolia, how would that impact our neighborhood? I mean...
So, I'm going to, so, before any regulations can be adopted, you have to comply with the California Environmental Quality Act. Shade and shadow is one of the impacts you look at for these types of changes, like especially a corridor change. If you think of the winter sun, which is lower in the sky, and you did 60 feet on the north side of the street, it could be that several lots are in a shade shadow for a significant portion of the winter or of the day. So, that would be something that you would analyze to see if there were a significant impact. That's what you would look at if you were significantly increasing heights and whether you had other sensitive uses. So, you would do a comprehensive analysis, light and glare, all of those things.
Sorry, I would also like to just kind of chime in and add that we've done a lot of planning efforts in areas adjacent to those R1 neighborhoods, and we've consistently heard from Burbank residents that they are concerned about any higher-scale development going into their neighborhood on those streets. What we have heard consistently to support high-density development or even medium-density development is in the, actually in the specific plan areas where the housing element opportunity sites are. People are very supportive of focusing our development in those areas and not on the corridors next to those low-scaled residential neighborhoods. This has been consistent through years, decades of planning outreach, and what we've heard from when we did our last general plan update in 2013, when we've done individual projects on those streets, and even when we do some of our specific plans, we hear that feedback, so.
And that's kind of what I expected, because we're all out in the community, and there is a concern, especially if you have a residential home, R1, and you have a tall building that's 60 feet high. There's also, along with the environment, along with the sun, and thank you, Mr. City Attorney, of the analysis, it's interesting to hear what goes into the, you know, the building process when you evaluate this. There's also something very minor that I bring up. People install solars on their homes, and you have this tall building right next to you, you're not going to have a solar system any longer. So, and this is the point where the specific locations that the report indicated was focusing on Magnolia and Burbank. So, there is a big possibility that we're not able to meet the suggestion or the recommendation to focus on Magnolia. I'm not sure about Burbank, because I don't know how close the residential homes are to the commercial, but specifically Magnolia is a tough street, because there's a lot of adjacent R1 residential neighborhood that will have a huge impact on them. Thank you.
Okay, you have a question, Councilmember? Go for it.
Yeah, just one last final question. The LCI proposal, Livable Communities Initiative, they're not giving us 14 checklists to match exactly, otherwise we won't qualify as a livable community. My understanding, it's simply 14 suggestions that we should take into consideration whether or not we adopt them all on their face or any of them. It's simply, hey, we think the city would be better off with some of these. Is that correct?
So, the planning staff sees this sort of submittal as, like all the other public comments we get, constructive feedback on our planning efforts, and we try to address all the feedback that we get where we can. And where we can't, we try to be very clear in communicating with our people why exactly we can't, but here's how we can kind of address the core of the issue or the heart of the matter. Maybe not in the exact way that you're proposing, but this is the way that this process has kind of created.
Okay. Thank you for the question. Any other questions? All right, we're going to, sorry, Mr. Ingram, we can't take questions from the audience. Look, let's go to discussion. I have a brief comment, and then I'm going to really go last here. Mr. Hess, I was pretty tough on you, and I apologize for that. Here, I'm not done, let me apologize fully. Now, look, I did play back the tape, and I heard what Mr. Prescott said, and I know what I asked for, but, look, Joe can, Mr. McDougall can probably attest to this, I've had many cases where witnesses can see and hear the same thing, and yet, they don't. They hear and remember totally different things. So, that's what I think happened here. I appreciate your staff, and I just want to say through you, the city manager, I know how hard Mr. Prescott, Mr. Ramirez, Ms. Landry, Mr. Planbeck, the whole planning team are working to do a lot of great things for our city. So, if there's any disappointment, it's in the fact that my time on council is coming to an end, and this is something I care very much about, and I was hoping to have a bit more depth in the conversation tonight about what thing, what components of the suggestions we were interested in exploring and those in which maybe we aren't. But at this point, I guess to my colleagues, and this is our alternate to you, I view it as we have two options on the table. We either have no appetite for considering it further, which is a fair point to make, but I for one would love to at least see that more detailed analysis, and maybe of the 14 suggestions, they may not all fit the Burbank way, but from what I see and what I know, I think some of them would actually complement and assist us in achieving our goals. And so, I would encourage one of you who will be on the council after November, December, if you're interested in having this conversation, to make the motion to at least have the more information, to have the discussion. It's something I would have very much loved to have participated in. So, thank you all. With that, who'd like to go, I'll say first, but next, who'd like to continue the conversation? Okay, Councilmember Mullins. I wasn't going to pick on you tonight.
I know, but you know, might as well, I'm here. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for clarifying that, because I was somewhat confused myself to what is before us and the executive summary and all this, and I sincerely mean it. I, again, I looked for every possible email, and I don't know if it was totally missed or came out of some, from somebody else.
I swear I will not interrupt you again, but I do want to attest for public consumption. I don't know if you all do. I check my spam filter every night. There's a lot of messages that end up in there, so it's entirely possible it wasn't sent to you, and even if it was, it may have been lost in the spam filter.
All right, thank you for that, because I'll go back and look, but it doesn't matter, we're here. I did have a chance to look at it earlier, and my questions or conversation to Mr. Ingram is not being attacking, I'm bringing this forward, it's more of a concern to why livable communities were not heavily involved in the discussion with staff, with all the meetings that have taken place. I would have loved to see them at those meetings, giving their feedback, having input. Tonight's meeting should have been, oh, yeah, we've been meeting, we've been talking, and here's what we agree with and here's what we don't agree with. However, that's not the case. I do have the concerns over all the work that we have done that, and things that we pass and things the previous council passed, that looks very similar. As Councilmember Anthony, there is 14 points, and a lot of them look like we have aligned with the same beliefs, with the same 14, and I am really happy to hear that it's either 14 or nothing, because just looking at Magnolia and some of the recommendations with the height and with the depth in the city of LA, we can't even compare to what the city of LA has done. I want to see what Burbank, we're always consider ourselves very unique, because we are very unique. I want to see what we can do here in the city of Burbank that would keep our neighborhoods protected, but yet provide those additional housing units that we do need to complete our REMA numbers. I am not totally, completely opposed to looking into their 14, and, you know, you're going to go through them and you see what we agree on or what we have and we don't have. But I do want to, I didn't want staff to deviate or stop from what they're doing, because we are in critical part. We should have approved those strategic planning like a year ago. We all know that we were saying, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming, but there is a lot that goes into it, like community... lot that goes into it, like community meetings. The media district, you guys had a ton of meetings and you're still having community meetings to take feedback. So, for me to say, oh, you need to stop and now focus on the executive summary, it's unfair for staff. It's unfair for the public who have been making inputs, having inputs on the process. So, I don't mind. I don't want to put it in stones that you gotta come back to me in a month and show me your second step report. What I'd like to throw out there is to incorporate their input, having those meetings. I know, Amanda, you've said that you're happy to meet and discuss it along with other staff. Having those meetings, having the input, and when you come back to us, it would be incorporated in a report when we approve this specific plan or before that, to come back in the report and to say, here's what we agreed on, here's our discussion, and these are the areas where we have disagreement. And then let council then direct the conversation whether we want to implement within the laws, within the requirement. Like, again, lot sizes are huge. 60 feet height in Magnolia would destroy a neighborhood. I don't know if we can even do it. So, I think allowing them to go, have a discussion, have meetings, come back when they present the plans to us, then at least we could get to hear back from them. That's where I'm standing. I don't want to force staff to stop everything right now. Focus on it. Come back to me with a second step report. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Who'd like to go next? Councilmember Takahashi, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for this discussion. First, I wanted to thank Mr. Ingram for coming tonight and for fielding the comments and questions. That couldn't have been easy. As a community member, you're not a staff. You're not a trained, paid professional in this. You're a community member who's advocating for something you care about. So, I appreciate you standing up for what you want and being there to answer questions. My sense and my understanding, especially after this discussion, of the points that were presented to us from the LCI is that there really is a lot of overlap with what we, what our goals in the city now are, what we're already doing and what LCI and their proposal has. There are specific code changes and specific changes that they, that LCI, Mr. Ingram and other folks in LCI are advocating for that, that are, the intent is in alignment with our housing and safe streets and community goals. So, I think that when you look at from an intent perspective, we're not too far off from each other and we're kind of really looking at specific ideas, specific things on how to implement these goals. So, I think that they're worth, this list is worth keeping in the discussion, just like any other ideas that come from the community that are in alignment with our goals. We keep them in the discussion. I think that they can be integrated. As we've already, Ms. Landry already discussed how that can be, these can be integrated into our specific plan, our housing plans, our safe street plans that are already in production. And to bring them in as in like a consideration as we would from any other consideration we get from the community. And I think the themes for me that's highlighted in this particular initiative is the concept of gentle density. And although we are already implementing that from a, in our code and housing plan, I think what the LCI is asking for, and I think something we could at least consider, is a little more intentionality around the gentle density concept. But doesn't necessarily mean we have to flip the table and start from scratch. We can look at it as a way to put a little bit more emphasis on that maybe and a little bit more, you know, eyes on it without completely, you know, changing course. I also think that we are, we have shown these past two years especially, I think, I've seen staff has really shown a capacity to listen to our community members. And I'm seeing it now even, you know. So, I think that LCI and advocates in LCI, now that we have had this discussion, I was there for sustainability when it was presented, it was presented at other commissions, it's in the conversation now. And we are listening and I think that listening will automatically include it in the discussion around all these issues. And because our staff has proven to be so good at listening to our community, not always agreeing, not always implementing, but listening and really considering it seriously. I mean, we look at the emails and the conversations that we can see ourselves that they do that very well. But I am confident that this conversation will now spur some really good conversations in staff about some of these concepts that maybe may not require a full report back, may not require a full, like, analysis, but they will be very considered when we're looking at those plans. I also think that with these kinds of advocacy, especially with specific, 14 specific items, it might be worth considering. I'm more comfortable with the idea of us as council, looking at those 14 items ourselves and deciding for us which ones we like and we want to advocate for, to have included in the staff implementation of the housing and the specific plans. It is great that the community is advocating for it and I do think that's important, but we're the decision makers. So, it's up to us to look at those specific ideas and decide, you know what, we really like these ideas. We want this one to be implemented. And yes, the staff can look into it, but so can we. We are capable of looking at least deep enough to know whether we think that these are good ideas to move forward with. We're not professionals in the sense of like experts in these exact things, but we can at least start the conversation ourselves. And I think that's something that we can do too, on our side of it. Just a couple more things. I think the list of 14 does, it seems a little overwhelming because it's a lot of things. And if we pulled each thing out individually and we had, if we were just talking about one item, it would be a much simpler conversation. But because we have 14, it's just so many that it feels overwhelming to do. It's overwhelming for staff to do report. That's why I think it's important to pull things out individually. So, in general, I'm not in favor of moving this whole thing forward as a giant piece, but I am in favor of having the continued conversation of these items because I think that they're interesting things to look at and worth considering. I don't know enough deep to know which ones are the most important ones to look at, but I think that they're important to have in the conversation, just as any other good idea that comes up, or potential good idea that comes up. So, I am in favor of giving direction to staff to include these as part of the information in moving forward with the specific plans and the housing plans and talking with the LCI advocates and us learning more. And I'm not necessarily in favor of having this entire piece come back as an entire study because I want to make sure that it's, that it's integrated into what we're doing and not something that adds more work into the staff that distracts them from the very, you know, a lot of work that has to be done in the specific plans. So, that's kind of my overarching feeling about the whole thing. But I do, I'm really glad we're talking about it. I think this is really important. And I really appreciate the staff being so willing to look at it seriously and think about and consider it. And I have a gut feeling that some of these things will probably fit really well into what we're doing. And maybe even are so close already that it's just a matter of tweaking little things here and there. All right. Thank you for allowing me my time, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Who'd like to go next? Yes, Councilmember Anthony.
I'll be very quick. I think you articulated exactly what I was feeling through this whole conversation. I think it's important for this organization comprised mostly of volunteers to show up, advocate for their position. But at the end of the day, I think the five of us, especially having the information in front of us and all 14 points to dive into it, look at it. And when it comes up, because we have four, like we said, specific plans coming, there's no reason why we can't have those conversations, bring up each of the items that would fit in those areas and have our friends from LCI come down, give public comment, give public input, having spent already some time with staff and organizing their thoughts that way. Yeah, thank you. I think you said it very clearly. So, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. And I appreciate what all my colleagues are saying, but I'm gonna deviate a little bit here. And if I, if I'm the only one, then that's fine. I would like staff to come back with something. I would want to know what they think about those 14 points. I'm not talking about adoption. I'm not talking, come back and we're gonna do everything all at once. We're gonna look at them together. But our city attorney, Ms. Landry, went through some of the points in there and mentioned, hey, we're already doing this. I would love to have a response for each one of those 14 points come back from staff so that we are not, even as a council, wasting our time thinking, hey, I think this would be a great thing to be added while our staff is sitting there working on the other side saying, we're already doing this, and have specific buildings to point to. So, I would love for that to come back to us to review so that we can really look at where the glaring holes are. I'm hearing a lot of, we're already doing this, we're already doing this, which is wonderful. So, let's focus on the things we're not doing and why we're not doing them. It may be that, I'm just going to speak hypothetically here, out of those 14 points, we are doing 10 things and there are four things that we are not doing. And when staff comes back and tells us, out of those four things, we are not doing these two because they're actually a state issue and nothing you do is going to change. Or the second one is, it is actually a safety concern for us and that's why we are not recommending that you adopt this. I would really love to hear that from staff. And then, the last two are things that we are not doing and staff is like, hey, maybe this is worth incorporating. Then it's up to us as a council to say, great, let's focus on those two and let's instruct you to be specific and to be methodical in this and incorporate those two things that we're not currently doing into our specific plan, rather than saying, here's 14 items, maybe they'll work, maybe they won't. We don't really know because we're not experts. I trust you all. You are experts. And that's why I'd love your opinion. And I know, please don't, don't hate me, even yours, Mr. McDougall. I'd love your opinion. You had some great responses today. I want to know what you think about these 14 items. Don't look at me like that, please.
You just ask him to write it, he'll write it. I'm kidding, Joe.
Oh, you got a worse look than I did.
I'm batting a thousand with staff tonight.
But, you know, all that to say, like, I really do appreciate the work that you all are doing. I think you are right. A lot of this is already in there. So, please, I would love to see, come back to us, what is, I would love to see it come back to us saying, we're already doing these 10 things. Please don't make us like reincorporate them, right? And here are the four things we're not. Here's why we're not doing these few. Here's what we think can be worth looking into. I think that's a way of maybe not creating more work for you all or quite frankly, for ourselves in reinventing the wheel.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yeah, I want to ask, Madam Vice Mayor, I, so, I like, I like going through the art typical process, but I think to your point with the 14 points, to come back with a second step, are you looking to simply have staff go through the 14 and sort of give a quick analysis on, this is already being implemented, or we're implementing this in this kind of way, or this is impossible, just a sort of a checklist?
Yes, which is what I feel in some way, shape or form was at least the mayor's original intention.
If I may just quickly add, yes, and I'll say it just for staff's benefit, should three council members decide to move it forward, my vision of it was, we would handle this list of recommendations, probably similarly to how the Burbank Police Department handles OIR recommendations, pretty short responses. We like this, we're already doing it, we don't think we should do this. I never anticipated it would be comprehensive or wholesale changes to our policy. That's what I had hoped to do tonight. And if it moved forward, I think that what you're both contemplating would be sufficient. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I think, and I appreciate that. I think that actually is not an invaluable thing to have, but I think maybe what might be more appropriate is to have that in a memo versus as an item that comes back to council that we deliberate publicly. The reason why I'm thinking kind of ahead here, and let's say we move forward with this, well, then another community member says, well, I've got 14 points. I want you to go over. Well, I've got 14 points I want you to go over. And not to say that the Livable Communities Initiative is not a valuable group. It is a, you know, important community group that's, has a very important focus. But there's a lot of community groups out there and they want a lot of things from a lot of councils. I mean, you know, we've been involved in this. So, I think that what we might want to consider is the best way of use of our time, of how can we get the information we want in a way that uses our time effectively, uses staff time effectively, gets the information we need to move forward, and using a process that is not gonna then sort of precedent, then it makes us, and then we're gonna be asked, well, why are you preferring that group over that group? So, I'm just, I think that, I don't disagree that the information would be great to have, but I guess what I'm more commenting on is a process here and making a process that's fair for everybody and also for us to get the information we need in the most efficient way without burdening staff.
Vice Mayor, do you have a?
Yeah, and quite frankly, to, my ask for looking at a second step report was out of respect for what the mayor had originally asked for, but I personally am not opposed to coming back as a memo. To your point, Councilmember Takahashi, of looking at, you know, we are the policymakers, but you all are the experts. So, I'd love your feedback when it comes to what policy I bring back. And I would just expect that we do our due diligence on and review it. And if staff points out things that haven't been done that are possible, I'd love to have those come back. We can always agendize things.
Is there any other?
No, I completely agree that I don't need a staff report to come back as a second step, open the door again for more discussion about who's right, who's wrong, what we need, and having to go through this and again, create the distraction from what we need to focus on with our specific plans. So, a memo will be more than enough for me and we can move forward with this.
Okay. Colleagues, I'd like to briefly add my comments, just for the record, and then I think someone can make the motion. I'll support whatever the council majority wants. I think a memo is a bit of a missed opportunity, but I still think it advances the cause and I'd support it. I just want to emphasize one thing that Ms. Bax mentioned earlier was a great question, and that's, what's the vision for Burbank? And for me, I look at, I think we're doing a lot of great work in certain areas of our community. Our downtown TOD plan is gonna be fantastic, the Golden State specific plan, all the things that you'll get to decide in the coming months and years. I'm really excited about. But it does not apply to the entire community. It's not holistic. There are areas of the community that I think about, like the western edge of Burbank, adjacent to Clyburn, where there are also opportunities for these kind of changes to make good. And that's why I was so excited about LCI is it's broader than a specific plan. Now, I think that the take home memo is a fine idea. I'm not gonna criticize or dismiss it. The only reason I had originally wanted to have the conversation is because depending on what, and by the way, to your point, Councilmember Takahashi, I have done the homework. I like all 14 points for the record, but I could be in the minority. Maybe there's only seven or eight that we collectively, or the next council collectively thinks are worth exploring. I just thought it would be a healthy dialogue for the body to say, we only want staff to really pursue these two or three as opposed to all of them. You can still do it. I think it's a bit of a longer process actually because then with the take home memo, someone will have to re-agendize it. And I just say it, you know, my last comment on this is, everything I do comes from the perspective of my four years on council. Our staff is working on a lot and through no ill intent of anyone, sometimes things just fall on the back burner or fall through the cracks. And this was something I really wanted to mobilize around and take advantage of, especially with all of our specific plans coming forward, our preparation for the Olympics. I just really felt that there was an opportunity here. But with all that said, I'll wrap with this. I think that Burbank, there's a lot of wonderful things about Burbank, but I also see a lot of peril facing our community. We have a mall that is dying, in my humble opinion. We have small business, commercial corridors that could do so much more if there was housing, where people could live and walk to where they shop and where they work. And I look at what LCI could offer and I just think it actually is a value-added idea. It's not necessarily looking at where Burbank's been, but what it could be, which I think is better than where we're at right now. So, I find it a fascinating concept. So, I'll just wrap with saying, should the council decide to explore it further, it's something that I'm passionate about. I think Mr. Ingram and the folks at LCI Burbank have proven to be accessible, that they want to communicate and collaborate. And so, my invitation to you, to staff would be, he's here, he got up here and answered a bunch of uncomfortable questions. They clearly want to be part of our process. So, I strongly encourage if the council's interested in exploring any of it, let's take advantage of it and let's not let the idea die on the vine. Because I've seen that happen too and I don't want that to happen here.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for that. And I think, not I think, I know I share the same passion about our community, what it could look like, our mall, our IKEA site, our Kmart site. But this is what staff is working on. This is what they're working on, our specific plans. And we're all gonna have the opportunity to weigh in when they bring it back, to look at the 14 steps or look at what we are gonna evaluate in the memo and bring this back, included, add some things to it, drop some things. But we can't, you said something about, you know, our community and the needs and, you know, what it could look like. We also have to be extremely careful what we approve because we could also destroy some neighborhoods such as the R1 and Magnolia that don't have big lots like the city of LA, that we can't put a 60 feet high building right behind a residential. So, we have to be methodical of what we're doing so we're not destroying our neighborhoods. Because all of us promised, and I've heard you and I've heard every one of us, including myself, promising protecting our neighborhoods with the expansion and the housing that we need to build. We're gonna do our best to protect our neighborhoods for not destroy the single family housing by putting... our neighborhoods for not destroy the single family housing by putting, um, you know, 60 feet high building right behind me where it's going to take away my sunshine, you know, that I have. So, you know, I'm throwing this out there for council to, not that I need to remind you, because I know you all have the same goal is protecting our neighborhoods. And this is my concern is, yes, we want to expand housing. Yes, we want to, uh, develop our sites, but in the same time, it shouldn't be on the cost of destroying our R1 zone, all of it, because Sacramento is doing that enough for us. And we don't have a choice and we all sit here and complain about what they're forcing on us. So I just want to leave you with that, uh, because I know you care as much as I do and every one of these council members care about our R1 zone and not destroying the residential area. Thank you.
No, I appreciate it. And all I would add is, I don't think that it does, but my intent in bringing the motion forward was I wanted it to be a conversation starter. And by doing a take home memo, I view it more of, uh, the conversation's probably going to stop, at least in earnest, but I think it can be an idea generator and maybe those ideas carry forward to future conversations. So, and I'm not in saying any of that to suggest what your intent was, but it was my motion and I wanted to speak to why I brought it forward and why I did it with a lot of thought and intent in the way that I did. So with that, let's do any other comments and let's take a motion.
Just really quick. I, I don't think it's going to die on the vine here. I think that we've got a community member who really cares. We've got conversations going on with staff. We're aware of it now. Some of us have been aware of it for a while, but it's more, it's on the table. It's out in the open now. It's been discussed. There'll be other community, community members now who've learned about it. This is not over. This is part of the conversation. And one thing I want to tell you too, Mister Mayor, is that you are moving, well, potentially moving on to the state level and you have a park to play too, that could help us as well from that level. So don't forget that after you leave us here, you're not going away forever. So you are going to be a part of this as well. And I think that this is not just us having this conversation in Burbank. This is a conversation many cities are having together. And so we're, we're evolving together with this. And if it's a good idea, if these ideas are good ideas, they will be done. We will get it because that's Burbank. That's what we do. We, we move forward and put in the good ideas happen. So I, I don't know. I have confidence in our city. I have confidence in our future leaders and that are sitting up here because I've lived here for 26 years and I've seen how we work. And I think, I really, really think this is going to keep going. And I understand that the idea that the memo might not be as, as like forward as you'd like, but I, I really have confidence that it'll keep going.
Thank you, councilmember. Uh, okay. Vice Mayor, I saw your hand first, then the councilmember. And again, I'll take a motion anytime.
I, I, I just want to say a couple of things because I know, James, you can't speak. And in our conversations, I think there's a couple of things that came up, uh, to the credit of LCI. To Councilwoman Mullins's point, we're not talking about Kmart's. We're not talking about these giant developments. The focus of LCI is really this gentle density, which I have to say, I would love to see, and I don't think that's destroying or whatever destroyer neighborhoods, because I, I live in it as a renter. Like those are the things I would like to live in. I, I know that there are going to be folks who are going to have to live in giant complexes. I love living in Magnolia Park in a, you know, six unit project. I do. And I wish there was more opportunity for folks to live in something like that where they are close to their communities, where they are able to live, walk and essentially enjoy their neighborhoods alongside their peers who are homeowners. And I, I think that's very possible. And that is what drew me to LCI because I love my city and I would love to see that gentle density in my city in a way that incorporates the entire vibe that Burbank has, quite frankly. And, and again, if you haven't had the chance, I, I've asked LCI for several meetings because I was very interested in what they were talking about, because so often we see the idea of Sacramento and reaching arena numbers as this evil target that we have to reach. And it's really not. There are ways to do it as LCI has proven that don't just creates 60 feet, like massive developments. There are ways to reach our goals that are, that are creative, that are neighborhood oriented, that keep neighborhoods beautiful and, and allow other people and more folks want to live there to access them in a way that also fills our school districts and ensures that Burbank continues to be the community that's accessible to families. And so that's, I know that's like very important to you all in the core of your mission. So I wanted to make sure to put it out there and say that. And then I'll pass it on to Councilmember Anthony, because I, I'm still thinking about it. I would like to see a second step before too, because I've seen a few of my ideas die on the vine. So.
I, I'll pass it over to Councilmember Anthony.
Um, I just want to push back on something you said, Mister Mayor. I think we had an excellent, robust discussion tonight. I don't think we got exactly what we wanted to talk about, but we found a way to get through it. I think we have five councilmembers up here who, and this is no slight on past councils, but this group can take an issue and drive down into its core parts and how it affects the city in a way that I, I've been watching councilmember, council meetings for years and this body here, uh, I think stepped up to the plate, um, where you thought maybe there was some failure, but we made a success out of this conversation. And I think, I think we can move forward with this. So with that, I'd like to make a motion and see, uh, how far it goes. Uh, I'd like to move that, uh, staff prepare a memo home covering the 14 points. Does not have to be comprehensive. We'd just like a simple overview on each of the issues. Um, is it already being implemented? Are we close to being implemented? Is there restrictions on implementation? Just those three, uh, on the 14 points.
Okay. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so.
I asked for friendly amendment. I just want to include a couple of things in there. So one, examples, because I think it was very fruitful to have Mr. McDougall tell us, by the way, there's this building here, if you want a point of reference that already exists. And two, I would like staff's recommendation, just because I didn't hear this being included, on the items that we're not doing yet. And if we're not, why? And what their thoughts are on that? Should we? Can we? Or can we not based on XYZ restrictions?
I'll accept the amendment.
Just clarification on the second item, uh, on the, the first one, I get the examples, but what's the second item?
So I'll give you an example. Relieving fee burdens. So there are development impact fees and it's the only way you pay for new infrastructure and you have fee recovery policies. And so that's that whole area where if a new development doesn't pay, who pays? And so that's one where we can have some discussion about, uh, nexus proportionality and how infrastructure gets paid for and that there's laws against one property or utility user subsidizing another one. So that's kind of, that was one that stood out to me that I didn't want to bother you with.
I don't know, Joe. It sounds like you want to write this memo.
So, so, so just point of order.
No.
Just want to make sure. Councilmember Mullins, does that clarify? Do you, do you accept the friendly amendment?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. So we now have a amended motion on the floor. Is there any other discussion on that motion? Yes.
Motion as given. Um, timeline wise, three months, six months? How long are we looking at something that surface level just to go through?
So, uh, Plan Manager Scott Plamack, I was discussing this with Principal Planner Landry. We, we do have several items we'll be bringing forward to the council over the next few months, including specific plans, um, ordinances, several we bring to you that are high priority. So it'd be helpful if we had up to six months to prepare this memo. Because there's some in depth and there's some analysis we definitely have to do with this. It's, it's not just are we or aren't we, but we do have some research we're going to have to do and some, we want to do a proper analysis. So in order to do that, I think we need a little bit of time to get it done.
Mister City Manager, do you have?
Okay. I think we have a slightly different answer, uh, but in the same vein.
Mister Ramirez?
So Fred Ramirez, Assistant Director, um, overseeing the team working on this effort. Um, we think we can get a memo to you and we're going to get a memo to you before we bring any of the specific plans forward for your consideration. So you'll get that feedback. Uh, if, if I may, if the council may indulge me for a moment. Um, I just want to be clear. I don't think the intent from staff was to somehow, uh, create a situation of us and them between LCI and us. I, I think it may have been lost initially in the discussion was that we wanted to look at all 14 of their points and see how there is alignment between those and the efforts that we're undertaking. I give the examples of the specific plans because the gentle density is a discussion in one of the Golden State specific plan where we have medium density residential, we're looking at info. I just wanted to bring that because I don't want to create a situation where it seems like we're not open to public input. All we're asking is that it be done through the process where the community feels like they have an opportunity to hear. And I want to be able to, for your purpose, to bring the input of the urban designers, people that are very qualified, to be able to sit with LCI and our staff and look at each point and really kind of turn it inside out and see where it makes sense. I, I will say, um, you've already done a lot of this work through the adoption of mixed use standards and for, uh, for single family residential, um, I'm sorry, multifamily residential in the corridors. So it's not like it's being omitted. I just think if we just get an opportunity to bring all that to you, we can lay out the structure and you can see how it works. So I, I don't want to have the public feel like, um, staff's not open to the feedback. We are more than willing to meet with Mister Ingram. Uh, and with that, then we'll be able to give you that memo, a very comprehensive memo. So the intent is to get it to you as soon as we're ready to come forward with the first specific plan, but do it in such a way so that it's comprehensive. To the concern you have, we don't want it just to be in the specific plans, but how does it apply citywide? So just wanted to make sure that was understood.
So thank you, Mister Ramirez. With that, do you want to put a timeline on it or just defer to staff?
I'm comfortable with staff's timeline. Yeah.
Wonderful. Any other commentary discussion before we take the vote? The only thing I will say, councilmember, is I'm going to continue to push for single payer. You can't fault me for that, but I'll accept a public option. Mister Ingram, we got to talk about some state changes. Okay, buddy? All right, take the vote.
We'll make sure to call you and we.
I'll be right back here to report to all of you in no time.
Was that a pro state preemption?
I have no idea. It's late, Joe. Let's take the vote, Ms. Clark.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Takahashi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Schultz.
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Good work, everybody. All right, all right. Now we're on to our second to last item on the agenda. Now is the time for council comments, including reporting on council committee assignments, attendance at conferences, regional meetings, community events, anything else of interest. Councilmember Anthony?
I'll be quick because I was out of town for most of this. Um, I, uh, served breakfast Thursday morning with many of you to the employees and, uh, that was employee appreciation breakfast. And then on Friday, I had a, uh, a meeting with, uh, Marguerite Leoni about, uh,
pending matter of litigation.
Pending matter, yes. Pending matter of litigation. Thank you.
You got it. Anything else?
No.
Okay, Councilmember Mullins, thank you for volunteering as always. No, I saw Councilmember Mullins first, please.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, for choosing me.
I always have.
Thank God it's not, it's not midnight. On, uh, September 25th, I attended the citizen, senior citizen board. Um, and then right after the same day, uh, I attended the milestone 65th anniversary celebration of Community Chevrolet. So congratulations, 65 years of success. Uh, right after that, I attended the Transportation Commission meeting and, uh, also the Chamber Mixer that was together with the celebration of Community Chevrolet. And the same night, um, I don't know how I did it, but I was bouncing from one place to the other. Um, I did attend the in-person community meeting for potential residential rent cap. Uh, great attendance. Um, this is my third meeting to attend, uh, and I did see the continuous participation. And I do want to give shout out again to, um, the city attorney and staff. And I also saw our assistant city manager there. So thank you for attending and participating. Um, the following day, I served breakfast right next to Councilmember Anthony. And we, um, the same afternoon, the mayor and I were together at Parks and Recreation Rocka Hula event that was very.
So much fun, as we always do.
We did. We, um, yes, I, it was fun. It was fun. Uh, we didn't have, we didn't have the hot dog, but the mayor did speak in Hawaiian to everybody and greeted them hello and goodbye and said a couple of words. That was great. Very well attended. Kudos to Parks and Recreation, putting on this event for our seniors. Um, they really looked like they were having a blast and they were all dressed in the Hawaiian dresses and the lei and they were just having a great time. Um, so that was the completion of my week. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Uh, Councilmember Takahashi?
I only have a few things. Uh, let's see, on Thursday, um, also was at the employee appreciation breakfast and Mayor, Vice Mayor and I were the early birds there at 6:30 in the morning, bright and early, bright and bush, early, was it bright eyed and bushy tails? Um, and then, uh, and then, uh, Vice Mayor and I, we had, that's why we were early is because we had an eight o'clock meeting we had to go to, which is the Valley Economic Alliance Board meeting. And then on Saturday, I attended the Pride in the Park event. I was there for a few hours walking around, super fun. Got a little warm. I was surprised actually, but it was super fun. And this is, I think, the third year now in a row that they've done it. And each year gets, I think it gets better and better each year. So it was super fun. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor at long last.
Thank you. All right. So on Wednesday, September 25th, I also joined my colleagues at Community Chevrolet 65th Anniversary Celebration. Congrats to them. Um, yes, bright and early at the employee appreciation breakfast the next day, and then Valley Economic Alliance Board of Directors meeting, which we were both on time to, after serving breakfast at 6:30 in the morning. Um, that same day at 10:30, I had a grand opening for LA Digital Productions, a new production company we have here in the city of Burbank. They're very eager to get in the business and get going and we're really excited for them. Um, and then on Friday, September 27th, along with the mayor, I attended the community read-in day at George Washington Elementary School. It was super cute, super fun, and they're wonderful. Um, and then on Saturday, September 28th, um, along with some of my colleagues, I went to the Burbank Pride event and was a part of their first, um, pride pan, or pride talks panel. So it was very nice. There were a lot of other prominent LGBTQ community members who are in prominent positions. So it was really great. Brian Snodgrass from the YMCA, Terry Walker from Providence. So it was great to be with folks on a panel talking about the importance of coming out and living your life very out and proud. And I hope that folks got something out of the panel. It was great. Again, the event itself was phenomenal, gets better every year and they are amazing. All right. And then on Monday, September 30th, attended the grand opening of Satara Wellness. It was very nice to see her have all of her community and her family there. So wishing that business a lot of success. That was my week.
All right. Perfect. Thank you, colleagues. Um, Wednesday, September 25th, uh, I had the chance to join the Vice Mayor for a tour of City Hall with one of our local Girl Scout troops. That was fantastic. Um, then we had the 65th Anniversary Celebration of Community Chevrolet as discussed. Following morning, 6:30 AM sharp, employee appreciation breakfast. I still don't know if I would try the vegan bacon, but, um, I, I appreciate those who are vegan and I'm glad to know that there's a choice for you, but I stared at that and I thought, not for me. Um, that afternoon, I had a meeting with our planning staff and a community resident who is concerned about an EDU construction nearby. And just a good reminder for me about the complexity of state EDU law, and I'll leave it there. Uh, yes, Rocka Hula was fun and I do know a little Hawaiian. And the fun part about the Hawaiian language is that hello and goodbye is both aloha. So either way, no, it was fun. We actually speak it in my house for obvious reasons. So, uh, I actually know it quite well. Um, and I also know that I am a howly. I'll explain though what that means offline, but I, I'm a howly as my family, as my ohana affectionately refers to me as. Well, I, I, I'm taking it affectionately, Councilmember Anthony. My goodness. Um, Friday, the 27th, I had a chance to read, uh, to read, uh, at George Washington Elementary with a TK class, and that was adorable. I got tripped up on what is the mayor, because I didn't really know how to explain that to the TK population. So I, that's right. Christopher Matthew Spencer does have me on a few YouTube videos. Thank you, Christopher. Uh, then Saturday, 28th, uh, we had Family Pride in the Park and I believe we had the privilege of, uh, presenting a certificate, uh, which was a great idea. Thank you for thinking of that. Um, and on behalf of the entire council, we just really reaffirmed our support for a wonderful cause and a wonderful organization. And last but not least, uh, Sunday, September 29th, uh, Ms. Clark and myself, uh, were at the Burbank International Film Festival, Festival, uh, delivering a framed. International Film Festival, delivering a framed, a framed proclamation, Mr. Hess, a lovely gesture, to Paul Feig, who is a Burbank resident who is renowned for directing and starring in a bunch of stuff. My favorite trivia is that he was the director of Bridesmaids, which was a groundbreaking comedy, one of my family's favorites. So it was really great to hear his story over the course of an hour about his career in the entertainment industry, and I don't think he's done yet. He's casting for a musical, I hear, so you might have a chance there.
Yeah, send that over to me.
Right on it. That's all I got. Now is the time for the introduction of additional agenda items. Do any member of the council have any items? Councilmember Mullins.
Where's that long list we have for the city attorney that we were saving earlier?
From Mr. Durigo?
Well, because he had us put it on the, I, I don't really need a staff report, but however you're letting me request one. What I need is what we were talking about earlier, police enforcement right around Burroughs High School, and that, I don't know how you want to.
I think it was crossing guard policy.
No, I wasn't addressing the crossing guard. I was addressing the safety and concerns over students and traffic and passing stop signs. And we need just to have enforcement. And so I was encouraging the captain to include that area in the enforcement. He's not here right now, but this is what I was alluding to.
So you want a follow-up memo or something?
I don't need it, I just need enforcement. I wanted to add it to his list to also include the Burroughs High School area.
Okay, we'll follow up and let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else? Yes?
On that same vein, I'd like to just formally, formally make the request to add traffic safety around drop-off zones for the next subcommittee meeting for your BSD mayor subcommittee meeting, and for our joint meeting, our next joint meeting as well. Thank you.
Anyone else? In that vein, not a new agenda item, but a request, Mr. Hess. What I think would be the best timing is if it's possible to have a joint committee meeting with BSD, maybe in November, before the end of the year and everything changes over for everybody, if that's possible.
Yeah, we're due, we're going to start working on that tomorrow, so hopefully we'll get it. And it's the mayor and the vice mayor, so we haven't met in a while, but we'll, we'll schedule that.
Sounds great. Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, we now adjourn the meeting, I'm going to actually go a little off script here.